All right, so at this point in time, would the Secretary of Defense start recording the meeting?
Yes, the meeting is now being recorded.
Okay, and I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Planning Commission on December 14, 2020 to order. Before we get on to the business of today, I'd like to introduce our new Commissioner, Miguel Calderon. Miguel, thank you for joining us, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you. Look forward to working with everybody here as well. Thank you. With that, I'm going to let you, Miguel, do the pledge of allegiance.
Awesome. My pleasure.
All right, if I may, please stand with your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic of Canada.
The Honorable Commander, Madam Secretary, will please call roll.
Yes. Commissioner Calderon.
Pardon me.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Nguyen. Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now I would like to invite you, Madam Secretary, to describe the way the public can access this virtual meeting.
Thank you, Chair. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaanna-video/live and to our website at www.santa-anna.org/CC/city-meetings. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial 1-669-900-9128. Enter meeting ID 315965149, followed by the pound. When prompted for a participant ID, just press pound. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial *9. When the comment period is opened, I will call on you by the last four numbers listed on the caller ID. After you are called upon, you must press *6 to unmute yourself. After you have unmuted yourself, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes. I will alert you when your time is up. Back to you, Chair.
Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Secretary, does anyone wish to speak on a non-agenda item at this time?
If you'd like to comment on a non-agenda item, please dial *9 now. I'll wait a couple of seconds to see if we have anyone. There are no speakers, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. With that, we will close the public comments on non-agenda items, and we'll move on to the contention calendar. Moving on to the contention calendar, I'd like to add a motion and a second to approve of the minutes from the last commission meeting.
Absolutely. Cynthia?
Cynthia, okay, do you have a second? Oh, second. Tom Morrissey, do you have a second? Okay, Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote of the minutes of the last Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Commissioner Calderon.
Yep.
Commissioner Garcia.
Commissioner Calderon needs to abstain himself because he was not at the last meeting. Thank you for that.
Thank you. So I'll mark him as abstaining. Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen. Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin. Motion passes with Commissioner Calderon abstaining and Commissioner Nguyen absent.
Okay, and then the next item, item B, at this point in time, request that we approve the absence of Ken Nguyen at this time. We have a motion and a second. A motion. Tom has a motion to...
No, don't do that.
Second, Cynthia. Norma, sorry, Norma, thank you. So we have Tom Morrissey and approved and seconded from Norma. All those, Madam Secretary, do we just have a roll call on that?
Yes, roll call for the absence of Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Calderon. Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen, I'm sorry, he's absent. Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is the end of the content calendar. Moving on to the business calendar, public hearings. With regards to public hearings, I'd like to review protocol. I will now review the process for the public hearings so that everybody knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will then be opened. The applicant will be given an opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. The applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to the comments made by public, limited to five minutes. Public hearing will then be closed. Discussion will return to the commission with formal action taken to approve. Additionally approved, denied, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following conditions when organizing your comments. A, please state your name and address. B, state whether you support, oppose, or are neutral on this proposal. C, your statement should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge of the gossiped emotion repetition. A clear and concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. At this time and place, I would like to consider item number one for the property located at 4111 South Main Street. Please note, the name decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days by an interested individual or party. Before we begin, do you have any commissioners at this point in time that would wish to disclose any regards with regards to this item? Madam Secretary, can you do... Okay, go ahead. Who is this?
Go ahead and do the roll call, sorry.
Okay, let's do a roll call on that. I'm going to start with Commissioner Calderon.
All right, I'm good.
Do you have anything to disclose?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, don't worry about it.
Yeah, first meeting.
First meeting, you're alive. You're good. Good to see you.
Yes, Commissioner Garcia, I own a townhome in the coverage gap identified by the AT&amp;T exhibit to the staff report. And so out of an abundance of caution, I will recuse myself from discussion on this item and will return when the clerk calls on me. So thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Norma, and we will have four people, or just five people at this point in time to do... Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm in luck now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morrissey, nothing to disclose. Commissioner Contreras, Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Nothing to disclose.
I have nothing to disclose myself, so having said that, staff, and I guess it's Fernando, you're going to be discussing this at this?
Yes, thank you, Fernando.
Fernando?
Yeah.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. For discussion tonight is Conditioner Use Permit #2020-19 and Variance #2020-4 for a new wireless facility, and it's located at 4111 South Main Street. The site is located at the southwest of the Sunflower Avenue and Main Street intersection. It is, to the south of the site, is City of Irvine and City of Costa Mesa. These are some site photos that show the site as it appears today. The left is a photo of the site looking east from Main Street, and the right is looking west from the 55 freeway. This site shows the site plan of the project. The new wireless facility and its equipment enclosure will be located on an existing Southern California Edison substation, and it's adjacent to the 55 freeway. This is an illustration and a photo simulation of the west elevation of the mono-eucalyptus. These are the propagation maps. The left shows coverage of the facility when it's at 60 feet tall, and the right map shows coverage of the facility at 80 feet tall. The facility at 60 feet tall still shows cell coverage in Santa Ana. Approval of a Conditioner Use Permit 2020-19 for a 60-foot-tall wireless facility would benefit the community by providing cell coverage in the adjacent neighborhood. In contrast, the variance approval for an 80-foot-tall wireless facility would visually impact the aesthetics of the neighborhood. However, as I mentioned, approval of a Conditioner Use Permit for a 60-foot-tall wireless facility would provide the necessary coverage in the city of Santa Ana. We requested the applicant contact owners of nearby high rises, and they did not provide sufficient information stating an actual effort was made. Exhibit 9 and 10 on the staff report show the applicant's site analysis and high justification. The high justification shows they want to have a wireless facility at 80 feet to overpass the freeway, the 55 freeway overpass. However, as you saw on the propagation maps, the 60-foot wireless facility still shows coverage in the city of Santa Ana. Alternative designs and sites were suggested to the applicant, and they would accommodate the applicant's request and meet city standards. For example, to the north of the site, there are locations, there are high rises and parking structures that the applicant could have used for co-location. The nearby properties are located north of the site. It's on Hutton Drive. With this, staff recommends approval of Conditioner Use Permit 2020-19 as condition and adopt a resolution denying Variance 2020-4. I'd also like to make a clarification that the resolutions make a mention of a monopine. However, the project is a mono-eucalyptus, and the resolutions will be revised to match the staff report. At this time, I'd like to, I am available to answer any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have a question of staff? We'll start with Commissioner Calderon. Do you have any questions of staff?
I have a question. Okay, so for this project, who is the one that's going to be... Is... Sorry, I hear backdoor noise.
Whoever's on the line, can you please ensure that your YouTube volume is turned down to reduce any feedback? If you're watching YouTube, please ensure that it's turned down so that we do not have feedback. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, I just have a question. So I live on Madison Park, and I know that they actually installed one of the cell towers there as well, and there was some, you know, community backlash towards, you know, there being a cell tower up there. So my question is, is this tower is going to be posted, is there going to be any, like, revenue coming out of it for, like, for the installation of it? Or is it just stationary, just for better coverage? Can I get some more information in regards to this, please?
Fernando?
Hi, this is, this cellphone site will provide better coverage in the city of Santa Ana?
The one that I'm talking about in Madison Park? Yeah.
Commissioner, this is Ally. Just to clarify your question, are you inquiring about this specific site or the site in Madison Park, please?
I'm asking in regards to this specific tower that's proposed. Is it going to be generating any income towards, to the community or to the city? That's my question.
Thank you. Because the site is located on non-government-owned property, the city is not going to be collecting any sort of revenues from the operator, but the city will, of course, just like any other project, collect one-time permit revenues from its installation, but won't collect any ongoing revenues as if it were like at a city park or something.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's my question. Commissioner Morrissey, do you have any questions? I don't have any questions at this time. Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions at this time, but might have something, you know, as we listen to some of the input from the developer. Okay, since there are questions of staff at this point in time, I would like to open up the public hearing, and would the applicant like to speak at this point?
I believe the applicant prepared a statement. I'm not sure if he's here. Tyler, are you here?
Just one moment, Chair. I know the applicant did want to speak. I spoke with him earlier this afternoon, so just one moment, let us double check. Okay, Tyler, are you on the line? Please press *6 to unmute yourself. Is that him? Ask him to mute. Tyler, please press *6 to unmute yourself. You are currently muted. There you go. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I do have a few things to say. First of all, I thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, and also thank you, Fernando, for working with us to get the project around this way and provide the presentation this evening. I do have a few items to go over before the presentation and the staff report, which I'd like to refer to, that go through those points. Does anybody have the staff report that was prepared in front of them?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Okay, very well. So to begin, I just want to give you a little background about how AT&amp;T and us, representing AT&amp;T, started developing a site. This is a site to fill a gap in coverage, where it has a coverage gap. So my job goes, starts with a search ring, which is circled on a map. AT&amp;T supercomputers generate this map. It's pretty based on calls, user data, all coming from surrounding towers and customer complaints who drop calls or poor coverage, especially at a time, you know, COVID-19, where people are at home more, working from home more, you know, using wireless services at a higher demand. The community, both residential and commercially, are in a benefit when there is a gap that is filled by additional wireless topics. So in this instance, you know, approval of the variance in CUP is not just for the city, but also for the surrounding community working from home at greater rates, you know, kicking up more bad bandwidth, which is why the cell tower here is especially needed at this time. So after we've assessed this search ring, we look at the jurisdiction, the municipal code, the related wireless communication facility ordinance. I then look at the preferences, the requirements of that code, and I accompany them with my preliminary conversations with planning staff and begin contacting partners. As the demand for that coverage increases, our search ring gets smaller, so there's more people trying to use the existing towers, and the more people are there now, so I've got to put additional towers to fill coverage gaps because there's more people using internet services and wireless services in a small area. So from there, we take a look at surrounding AT&amp;T sites and see, okay, well, where can we place a new site that will fill this coverage gap? And I refer to page 1-47 of that staff report. You can see the surrounding towers in the general area. All those little blue triangles, that represents an AT&amp;T existing facility. So we've got to find a location that can serve to provide the coverage for the coverage gap area. In this case, those areas are defined further on in the Getzville Report on page 1-33. I list the AT&amp;T's coverage gap area for the surrounding community, both the residential community directly north of the tower and the commercial facilities, south and then east of the tower as well. So from there, we assess where we're going to place this tower, and then, okay, well, what is the jurisdiction say with the list of preferences? Can we go here? Can we go in the park? Can we go, you know, across the street at the school? Can we go in a commercial zone? Typically, in the case of Santa Ana, there's a preference for rooftop locations and then also co-locations. In this instance, we were unable to find a rooftop location or a co-location that can fill AT&amp;T's coverage gap. We did an exhaustive year search for a rooftop site in the nearby area, and I can refer you to exhibit 10, that's 1-52, is alternative site analysis. Specifically, if you look at 1-54, you'll see the various buildings in the area that are high enough to fill AT&amp;T's coverage gap that we pursued, tried to develop relationships with landlords, and beneath the city's zoning code. However, in all cases, we were unable to move forward and find a willing landlord. There's evidence of this, which is somewhat contrary to what was discussed in the presentation. I refer you to pages 1-64 through 66, demonstrating AT&amp;T's attempts to reach out and do business and develop a site on a rooftop of an existing building, like the Experian and a few others, the Marriott specifically. But due to management preferences, leasing, and a few other items, I could elaborate further on if you'd like, we were unable to find a willing landlord and candidate. So we then moved to the SCE, so the Southern California Edison Substation, and our initial proposal was to build a 120-foot utility pole. This site is next to almost 200-foot SCE overhead towers with the utility lines coming off of them, tall trees, and then that freeway overpass. So our proposal was to land in surrounding area, put up a utility pole to match the existing very tall utility poles there. Staff felt that a tree would be better, and we lowered the height to 80 feet, which is the purpose for the variance. So, you know, with the surrounding trees being comparable, this one is slightly larger, but there are taller, I wouldn't call them builders, but there are towers and similar structures in the very surrounding area to what we're proposing this tower. So I just want to make sure that's noted, and that's also something you can see, if you take a look at the photo simulations in the staff report. Those photo simulations are available, I recommend 1-33, and then also 1-31. You can see the heights of the surrounding trees, the proposed mono-eucalyptus or broadleaf tree. AT&amp;T is proposing at 80 feet in that picture, and I feel it's consistent with the height of the surrounding trees and also those poles in the background. There are not a lot of residents in this surrounding area directly near the tree. I don't think it's going to obstruct anybody's use shield. It's just going to provide better coverage for the community, and I'm sure everybody in the community with AT&amp;T would benefit greatly from that and can feel the same way. A few other areas just in regards to locations that we did pursue, north of the SCE substation on Main. There's a park there and by the city. It's not the preference of the city for wireless communication facilities to be in parks at size. Let's see, and then there's a few other points that I just wanted to touch on, just as to what we do when we look for a site, and upon that site apes. It has to be zonable, leasable, RF-able, constructible, and regulatorable. So I've got to find a zoning with a local municipality or the local jurisdiction or ordinance code that says, hey, you can build this here. Leasable, I've got to find a willing landlord, and then RF-able, the RF engineer has to be able to say, this will fill our significant gap in coverage, which is the reason for the issuance of the search ring and the reason I'm speaking to you here today to develop this site. Construction has to say, yes, this meets our standards of what we can construct reasonably. And then regulatorable, meaning the environmental regulations and extensive other regulatory commitments that AT&amp;T has to meet. and extensive other regulatory commitments that AT&amp;T has to meet in order to develop the site, whether it be NECA or other environmental or local, federal, state regulatory requirements that need to be met in order to develop the site. So after all of those are taken a look at and said, okay, this is an option for AT&amp;T, we can move forward. In this case, this is the only location in the surrounding area that we were able to find that met those five ables. And that height at less than 80 feet would not fill that significant gap in coverage. I know that was referred to in staff's presentation. However, if you do see some of the exhibits we provided from RF engineers that went through AT&amp;T legal counsel to verify and make sure that everything we're saying is accurate is demonstrated, then I'd refer you to a statement made by AT&amp;T RF engineers on page 1 dash 43 through 1 dash 46. This is the radio frequency statement, basically summarizing. It is required to have a tower at this height to fill the gapping coverage. And I would point to slide 1 point 48 to 1 point, 1 dash 5, 0, to show you the differences, specifically on, let's see, the first of the radio propagation maps before and then after. And then, the one at 55 feet. The one at 55 feet, you can see the community to the northwest, that's the residential homes, who, as I said before, more and more people here are working from home now. That is not served at a height of 60 feet. I know it says 55 on the slide. 55 is the red, and that's where the antenna level is. It's usually a little bit lower, so you can provide a spouting of coverage for the actual antennas and cells with the branches. The slide directly above that, you can see that community is now served by the additional 20 feet or the variance that we're asking for, a total tower height of 80 feet to that same area. So that community is now served by the tower at a greater height. So, yes, the community to the southeast, where the site to the east at a lower height isn't serviced well, given the height, and there's an obstruction of the up through the overpass, but the gapping coverage, which is part of what I'll get to next, is not filled. If you look at the two comparisons on 1 dash 49 and 1 dash 50, showing basically a tower height of 60 feet and then a tower height of 80 feet or 75 and 55, and head level. And so, you know, after I've gone through, I've found this site, and I've shown, here's where I can build this, given those five ables I went over. I've got two pillars of, that I've got to prove that I meet. And that, you know, those are a significant coverage gap, and then I'm using the least obtrusive means to fill that coverage gap. So, in this instance, this is the coverage gap, and it's also demonstrated by the RF statement and then the least intrusive means, meaning that I've shown that there's no other design that would work given the zoning code, the preferences, the staff, and the city to be able to do that. And in this case, I think we've done that. So I'd just like to, I guess, ask that you consider the items that I've gone over when considering to approve or deny the variance, and I'm happy to answer any questions and further explaining the information I went over.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Calderon. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
I do not have any questions at this time. Thank you for providing a short report.
Commissioner Morrison?
No, I don't have any questions for the time. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynn, uh, Commissioner, uh, sorry, Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Uh, Chairman, can I ask for Commissioner Lynn?
Ah, this is here from Commissioner Lynn. Go ahead. Do you have any questions? I can get. All right, I got it. Okay, I have no questions. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
No questions, and thank you for the presentation.
Okay, I'm good too at this point in time. Would like to review the presentation. What we do is we'll open this to comments from the public. At this point in time, Madam Secretary, do you have any?
Yeah, can I speak just one last, I guess, closing remark here, just for the Commissioners and Chairman? That is, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that I... We have demonstrated, you know, the significance, or provided significant information regarding other locations that bear enough be possible. In this case, there aren't others, and that this is a significant coverage gap that wouldn't be filled at a height less than 80 feet. Further on in the report, it does speak about, you know, if a height of 80 feet wasn't approved with the variance, it would, in essence, be a kind of prohibition claim against the Federal Communications Act. And so AT&amp;T would look to, you know, pursue this further and obviously appeal the decision for it to be denied for the height of 80 feet tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you for your comments. Madam Secretary, do we have, have we received any public, any written communication on this item?
No communication has been rece, uh, no written communication has been received.
Okay, do we have any public comments that we have, are there any public comments at this point in time?
If you'd like to speak on this matter, please dial star nine now. I'll wait a few seconds. There are no callers, Chair.
There are no callers. Okay, having no callers at this point in time, we will close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the Commission. Okay, with regards to the Commission, let's just go through Commissioner Calderon. Do you have any questions or comments or a motion?
I have no questions at the time.
Okay, Commissioner Morrison?
Yes, I am wondering, so where staff is recommending that we deny the 80-foot height due to impact to surrounding structures? Have we received any input from surrounding businesses or residents? Is that would be an issue?
Yes?
We would be approving conditional use permit for 60 feet. That's what the code allows us, that's what the code allows the height to go. In regards to denying the variance, we did not make the finding that the extra 20 feet are required because at 60 feet, the wireless facility covers, fills the coverage in Santa Ana. I think the applicant is requesting the extra 20 feet to fill the gap in the city of Irvine and the city of Costa Mesa. And in the site analysis provided, they indicated that the 80 feet were required to overpass the freeway. However, it looks like the freeway height is at 55 feet. So I don't think the 80 feet is necessary. He's asking, um... We, I don't think we have any community input. I think this is just regarding the code.
Let me, okay, so Commissioner Morrison, does that answer your question? Yeah, yes, it does. Okay, Commissioner Lynn?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
So, the staff saying that because of the visual aesthetic impact, intrusion is because of, if it were to be 80 feet? And how do you?
That is correct.
And do we have any of the cell towers at 80 feet in the city?
We have approved variances at 80 feet. However, they have been for a co-location, and there is three. Relocations that were approved for variance, but they were all approved for co-locations. This would be a brand-new tower.
So they would just remove, or will they leave that on the Commission? The others?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The cell towers that were at 80 feet that are already approved, when they came to us, was it just a removal or a reconstitution?
No.
So has this Commission voted on an approval for another AT&amp;T tower since we've been on? Just two seconds, I have a question.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No, to, I just wanted to complete that.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'm sorry, Chairman, were you going to say something?
No, you could just, I was, no, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I believe in the time that, to answer your question, Vice Chair, I don't believe the city has approved any variances for additional height since the time that you've been on the Commission. The times, just to add a little bit of background information, the times that the Commission has approved additional height above 60 feet was, as was Fernando was describing, for co-location, which is when a tower would have multiple arrays for multiple carriers on them, and therefore, the additional height was needed and justified because a single tower would be providing coverage for multiple cellphone company carriers. In this project's case, the applicant is proposing the additional height, but for only one carrier at this time.
Okay, and thank you, Ali. Unfortunately, the feedback, the bounce back from Fernando's phone is not good, so it's really hard to understand, so I think that helps me out, that I can hear clearly.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo, any other questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Ali, Fernando, a couple of questions I have. I mean, first of all, you know, the fact that this is in a location that happens to be very close to Irvine, very close to Costa Mesa, but it's in Santa Ana, you know, I think that when it comes to cell towers and everything related to cell towers, unfortunately, they're not necessarily territorial from the standpoint of city boundary lines. They're territorial from the standpoint of coverage that you can get at certain, with certain capabilities. So, the fact that it shares multiple cities, I don't see that as a real issue. We did change, we did, in fact, state that there are other 80-foot towers or towers that could be even higher than 80-foot. I don't know whether that's a fact or not, but there are other 80-foot towers that are... But they share multiple carriers. I'm not sure if that's a criteria or not that we should, that we should necessarily consider as a reason for not allowing to go a certain height. Because I don't think we set, I don't think we set the guidelines and say, you know, from a city point of view, do we sit there and say, you can't have an 80-foot tower if it's solely used by one carrier? Does it say that in our municipal code? Or, you know, if it's multiple carriers or single carriers, what difference does that make because they're making the investment, the carriers are making the investment in the, in the, in the towers themselves, are they not?
Chairman, thank you for your question. So, to provide a little bit of context, the ordinance does cap the height of these facilities at a maximum of 60 feet. So, the ordinance is blind to co-location and to, you know, single carrier versus co-location. It just simply says, if you'd like to build a new cellphone tower, the maximum height is 60 feet. Under today's federal law, I believe an applicant or owner of a tower could actually ministerially now add up to 15 feet to raise the height of a tower to 75 feet if it's for the purposes of co-location. But it has to be an existing tower. So that's why, you know, these variances for height additions are becoming fewer because federal law allows that sort of exemption for existing towers. But for new towers, like the one we're considering tonight, the code does cap it at 60 feet.
But it caps it at 60 feet for whether it's a single carrier or a multiple carrier?
That's correct.
Okay, so, okay, so, so you have that, you have that sole carrier or multiple carrier? That designation exists at 60 feet? Now we're going to 80 feet. And we have in the past allowed multiple carriers to go 80 feet. But in this particular case, we're not, we're not allowing a single carrier to go 80 feet. I, I, I kind of think that that's a, that's really something that is not necessarily a good factor. I mean, let me, let me step back and say, right now, the pandemic situation that we've had in this country, let alone in Santa Ana, we realize at this point in time that there are, there is a huge amount of dead spots in the city of Santa Ana. You know, kids that are trying to go to school online, you know, 40, 50% of those students don't have online capability with the existing towers that exist. And I just think that, you know, if we have the opportunity to increase the bandwidth, the areas of coverage by putting in towers at 60 to 80 feet, I don't see the, I don't see the challenge there, especially, especially the location of this particular tower. It's located near power lines, it's located in an open area, it's pretty much, you know, open farm area, if I'm not mistaken, on one side, and then, you know, the SEC area on the other side. That's, I may have just little comment on that. Ali?
Thank you, Chairman, and definitely, definitely, you know, solid perspectives. I think it's also important, and I'm sure Lisa Stork could chime in on this one if needed, but when the city considers a variance, there has to be hardship proven that's related to size, shape, or topography of a site, like an immovable boulder, or a trough, or a canyon, you know, a depression that necessitates the extra height, let's say. And those findings must be made by the Commission that there's a unique topographical situation on the site, which is one of the reasons why, as Fernando was explaining in the, in the presentation, it would be difficult to make those findings for a site like this, which helped inform the recommendation for denial.
So, you're saying at this point in time that since there's nothing of any obstruction at this point in time, hearing or any irregularities with the area, that we can deny the extra 20 feet?
The inability to make those findings, and all four findings required for a variance, would make it difficult to support approving that variance application.
And the other three or four 80-foot towers that we have in the city met those requirements?
There was sufficient context there for those that the Commission's voted approve, voted to approve them. That's correct.
So, they met the criteria, or one of the criteria, or two of the criteria that you outlined?
Correct. Technically, from a legal standpoint, all four findings of fact must be made to support approval of a, of a, a condit, a variance application, excuse me.
Variance, that's, that's correct. You have to be able to make all of the findings. And in those other cases that Ali is referencing, you were able to make the findings, the staff in analyzing this project and this site. in analyzing this project and this site did not feel they can make the findings for the variance.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question, Lisa?
Go ahead, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Lisa, so the applicant said that if it was denied, it would return with, to appeal. What is the likelihood of that?
So what the applicant can do is if they're unhappy with the planning commission's recommendation or decision, they can appeal to the city council, and then the city council will hear it as a new hearing. And again, they will look, they will have to be able to make the same findings for the variance.
Okay. Thank you.
So let me ask you this, is the eighty-foot tower, in the pictures that were in the staff report that were put out there, those were, is the eighty-foot tower still what would look like a tree? Is that the intent that it's going to, whether it's sixty feet or eighty feet, it's going to look like a tree?
Yes, it's going to look like a mono-eucalyptus, or eucalyptus tree.
It will be, it will be a eucalyptus, eucalyptus tree.
Okay, that makes a big difference in my book, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I was going to, Chairman, Commissioner Morrison, the applicant has stated that there is no other location that a tower could be put to resolve some of the dead areas they have. Did staff concur with that, or is there any, did staff look into that at all?
I did look into that. I know that they provided a site analysis. However, the site analysis didn't necessarily show sites that, in my opinion, could have helped accommodate for the applicant. I know that the applicant also went and asked, or attempted to get in touch with some of the building owners. However, I think the attempt was minimal because I know even Vince was in touch with some of the building owners, and they were looking forward to speaking to AT&T, but the site analysis didn't really show an attempt to talk to those building owners. So I just don't think that there was an actual attempt from the applicant.
So your point is, you're saying that the applicant said that they attempted to talk to the people in the area, and you're saying they really did an attempt? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
They didn't provide the proof that they spoke to some building owners.
Okay, so, okay, and they didn't, yes, go ahead.
Then I'd, I'd like to ask, why is it in front of us, and it's, I mean, does this project need more time so that they can cover, cross all their Ts and dot their Is, and, and see if there is another location, and should perhaps, if you're not interested?
Why? I, I, I don't know. Well, I mean, what I see is, there has been, based on the documents that were presented here in the staff report, I mean, it appears that there's been quite an extensive amount of, of work done to, to look at this property and look at what other property alternatives are. I mean, you know, right now, where this is located, and everything else, it doesn't seem to me, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen to the farmland next to the, next to the highway, we don't know what that is, but, you know, you've got the neighborhood just to the north of the tower, but there's power lines in that same area, are there not?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Commissioner Morrison, go ahead.
I was just thinking, you know, notwithstanding the, whether or not, if this is in fact, the only place that you can put a tower to achieve the coverage they need, this is really the best place to put it, like next to a freeway, like it is.
Yep.
You know, it's not near any residences, and, but even if it's not, it's still really the best place that we're going to put a cell tower. You know, I can't imagine another, another site that would really, really be less intrusive to have an eighty-foot tower. And, you know, driven the points you brought up, you know, with the pandemic and coverage being the way it is, and how critical it is for, you know, students and businesses to operate, I, I'd be in favor of increasing it to eighty feet.
Okay, I appreciate that, Tom. Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have just, yeah, I'm, I'm echoing your comment, Mr. Chairman, in my, I noticed that the, the coverage of AT&T in San Ana is quite weak, and if the, if the new higher tower of eighty feet is able to enhance the coverage and bandwidth and also provide services for the, for the residents in San Ana, I would support it.
Okay. All right. I mean, Mike, I'm just going to make one other comment here, and that is, going back to what Tom's saying, yes, I think by the highway, it's, it's in a, a location that's not a problem with, with residents or anything. I look over to the left of the picture that we got on page one dash fifty-two, and you've got the power lines over there. And I can also say, unironically, that, you know, I'm, I am not an AT&T carrier, I don't have their product, but the other product that I do have, there's a dead spot that exists right there on the highway that I always get with my current coverage. And so, you know, there are dead spots around that area. This is obviously something that will take care of the dead spots from the AT&T point of view. You know, I, I think we're, you know, we have, we have certain requirements within our code. We all understand at sixty foot, we understand that it has been arbitrarily given to several, several, several situations where it's down to eighty feet. We also talked about federal requirements changing it to seventy-five feet, or giving it seventy-five foot leeway. Yeah, I'm, I, I too am in favor of, of going with the eighty foot. But, you know, let's see, if there's any other comments, I'd like to hear anything from Commissioner Cullarin at this point in time. Well, yeah, I mean, I completely agree with the, the comments that were made
by the other commissioners. I am also in favor of it. I think right now, you know, in the current situation that we're all living in, I think it's a great idea that, you know, for residents and students especially, that they get the best coverage as possible. So, yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're, if we all come to the agreement that we make it higher, I'm all for it. I support it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cullarin. Do any of the other commissioners have any, any other comments they'd like to make on this at this point in time? Commissioner, Vice Chair, contrariously, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I'm also in support of making the exception, and, um, staff can look into, bring back, you know, a new version of the, of the, for some of these situations, so that it doesn't seem so complicated when it really isn't. But it may be, maybe a few methods with the ordinance would be good, but I'm hesitant.
Okay. So having said that, you know, we have a, staff has made a recommendation, do we have a motion on this item at this point in time?
Chairman, this is Ali. Sorry to interrupt really quickly, but just as a matter of procedure, tonight before you is a resolution of denial for the variance. So in order to, if, if the commission desires to pursue approval, and Lisa, please help me out if I'm giving different information, but the staff would need to return with a resolution with findings of fact for approval, and any direction from the commission as to any design, or aesthetics, or any sort of feedback to help make those findings.
Lisa?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me now.
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Um, the resolution that we have prepared, based on the staff recommendation, was to deny, so we will have to be able to put some findings in the record so that we can prepare a resolution to approve. So tonight, if you have some findings that we can put on the record, we can prepare a resolution to approve, and then you could probably just, we could do a receiving file of that resolution to approve, or we can go over it verbally tonight.
So what is it that we need to give you specifically?
We need to be able to make some of the findings for the variance, to grant the variance. So if you look at the resolution, it has the findings that we, the staff felt that could not be made, so we have to be able to make some findings that certain, um, certain, certain things about the area or the property itself make those findings possible to make. So there is a, there's a finding about the topography, findings that the staff in their report said were not able to make. Based on your conversation tonight, your discussion, we feel that some of those findings perhaps can be made, so we just need to be able to make those findings.
Okay, so where do we start with the findings? I'm going back into the...
My, my computer is having problems.
Sorry, the findings.
So the findings are in the resolution, so numbered separately?
Can, can you give me a page on the staff report?
Well, my computer crashed, so let me bring it back up again. I brought it up twice, and it keeps having a problem.
Well, it's probably retired before you retired.
I'm on the list, I'm at the top of the list for a new computer, and I'm leaving. Kind of ironic.
Uh, Commissioners?
Yeah, well, there you go.
Commissioners, the, the resolution for the variance begins on page one dash fifteen.
Going down again, let's try it again.
And the finding, most findings are... That's the start of the resolution.
So we'll want to navigate ourselves to Section C, Item One. The first finding is that the use will provide a service or facility which will contribute to the general well-being of the neighborhood or community.
That for that finding, you seem to be discussing the gap, and you seem like you are able to make that finding based on the discussion tonight.
Extra coverage, extra coverage.
Still in the gap, exactly.
Reducing the gap.
Still slowing down. So you go ahead, Ali, of the second finding that we need to make.
Thank you. The second finding is that the proposed use, under circumstances of the case, will not be detrimental to health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity. So that could be tied back to the filling the gap and the extra coverage.
And...
Well, I mean, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead, Chair, go ahead, Chair.
I mean, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be the fact that it's, it's remotely located at this point in time?
Okay, we'll add that to the finding.
Well, under Q, at the end of paragraph, ends with AT&T, it says, due to the proposed type of the wired facility, lots of choosing, they'll be able to modify the facility, will visually intrude. So we're saying that in a location that will not visually intrude, affect adjacent businesses and the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think that's correct. Okay.
And I think also a point that...
Go ahead.
Point that, also a point that you raised that we can add to the findings is that there were no communications from nearby residents or businesses opposing?
Right.
All right, then go down to the next finding we have to make. Okay, I'm down to one dash ten, I'm almost there.
It's all right, Lisa. The next finding has to do with the use will not adversely affect the present economic stability or future economic development of properties in the area.
It will not adversely, it will enhance, yeah, Tom, you took the word out of my mouth, it'll enhance economic development of the properties surrounding the area. It will increase coverage. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And then the last finding for variances, that the proposed use will comply with regulations and conditions specified in the zoning code for such use. I'm sorry, second to last. So... In this case...
It, 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 they're asking for a variance, so it doesn't comply with Chapter Forty-one, but if we can make these findings, we can grant the variance. It's going to be stealth, correct? As the mono-eucalyptus?
Right.
And if there are any other conditions, they will need to comply with any other conditions you want to add to the resolution as you're going to approve it?
You can restate that, Lisa, please.
Um, so they're not meeting Chapter Forty-one at this point because they are asking for a variance. So you can also specify any certain conditions that you want to add on to this variance, such as, you know, maintaining the trees so that the fronds and everything, you know, are up to a certain standard, or, you know, removal of graffiti, certain things that we normally add to some of the conditions for these types of approvals.
Okay. That's fine. Normal, normal as well as abnormal, not abnormal, but normal maintenance along with specific maintenance to, to maintain the condition of the, the tower and remove any graffiti that might occur.
Okay. Okay, and then the last one is that the proposed use will not adversely affect the general plan or any specific plan of the city. So in the area, we were concerned about the height, the aesthetics, that type of thing. So again, you might want to go back to your other findings you had, the earlier ones. And that's all the ones that I see.
The extra coverage you're talking about, and remotely located?
So affecting the general plan or any specific plan. So I don't know if there are other design elements or things that we can reference here, Ali, that we want to make sure that they comply with or be consistent with.
Ali?
Uh, yes, we can look at the general plan for things about enhancing corridors along, in the urban design element, and aesthetic impacts in the circulation element, as well as the stealthing and the location from residential uses, which is encouraged by the code, I think a minimum of one hundred forty feet. Those are all factors that could be added to this finding.
I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, this is the, if we look at the, at the new general plan, the, the area that we're talking about is the south end of San Ana, which in the Alton area, Anton, Anton area, and everything else, we're talking, we're talking about putting up ten and twelve-story buildings.
Correct, in the, in the draft general plan.
Yeah, in the, in the, in the vicinity of this tower, which, while ten purchases a ten-to-twelve-foot building would dwarf an eighty-foot cell tower.
Hypothetically, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Hypothetically, okay, I'll take, I'll take it as hypothetical. Fine, okay. Hypothetically speaking. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we can, um, we can redraft the ord, so the, the resolution that was before you today, you have two different resolutions, one for the CUP and one for the variance. The one for the variance that the staff recommended was a denial with all the findings that could not be made. So based on the conversation and discussion today, we can draft a resolution that approves the variance, but since that was not included in the packet, we'll have to bring that back to you for final approval.
Okay. So from the standpoint of approval or motion at this point in time, do we have to make a motion for the CUP?
Yes, we can make the motion for the CUP, and then you can, we can reference that your motion, uh, based on one hearing the discussion, okay, you haven't made a motion yet. But if you make a motion to approve the variance, then we need to come back with that resolution and the findings for you to confirm those findings.
Okay. All right. So who would like to make the motion at this point in time?
There are two different action items before you.
Right, so the first motion we're talking about making is the motion to approve.
Approving the CUP.
About the resolution for approving the CUP, okay. Will one of the commissioners make a motion? I will, uh, make that motion to approve, uh, CUP twenty twenty dash nineteen, because that's the, you know, that's the sixty-fourth.
No, that's correct, twenty twenty nineteen, CUP.
You know, okay, then there's the variance to go to eighty, okay, yeah, so we'll. Okay, so, Tom, Tom, you've made the motion, and, uh, Miguel, you, you seconded, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion on this item at this point in time? Hearing them, Madam Secretary, would you do a roll call vote?
Yes, thank you. Roll call vote for approving the CUP. Uh, Commissioner Calderon.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five zero with Commissioner Garcia abstaining.
Okay. And then we have the resolution.
We have the variance item.
The variance, okay, the variance item, so we need a motion on denying the variance at sixty feet, or requested the variance at sixty feet? Or are we gonna, or do we make a motion to approve an eighty-foot tower?
Yeah, so, so if you make a motion to approve an eighty-foot eucalyptus, then that would be denying the variance twenty twenty dash oh four. I mean, it would be approving the, the variance twenty twenty oh.
Right. Okay.
So it's a, it's a, it's a motion that's different than the recommended action by staff.
Okay, who would like to make the motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to, to, the, um, the, the eighty feet.
Okay?
Definitely.
We have, second, Vice Chair Contreras Leo, thank you. Any other comments? Is that okay, Lisa, as we've, as we've designated the, uh, motion?
Yes, so your motion is to approve variance number twenty twenty dash oh four for an eighty-foot mono-eucalyptus, correct?
Right, I guess, go ahead. All right, yeah. Madam Secretary, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, roll call vote for the variance, for approving the variance. Commissioner Calderon.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia, I'm sorry, she is abstaining. Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero with Commissioner Garcia abstaining.
So what I would recommend is that we redraft the resolution to approve the variance, and then we will add the normal or usual conditions that we put on the, um, cell towers facilities.
Okay.
And we'll bring that back to you at the next meeting so that we make sure that all of your comments were incorporated into the resolution as the findings and the conditions.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Lisa, thank you for helping us through that, stepping us through that. Ali, thanks for your help on that, we appreciate you, you follow through on this. And thank you, uh, for the motion. We will now, uh, this is the time and place to consider item number two, environmental review, number twenty twenty dash four eight, general plan amendment number twenty twenty dash oh seven, and amendment location, uh, amendment application number twenty twenty dash oh five for the property located at twenty-five thirty and twenty-five thirty-four West Westminster Avenue, San Ana. Please note that the recommendation on this matter will be forwarded to the City Council for final determination. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything that they would wish to disclose with regard to this item? And also, Madam Secretary, have we alerted, uh, Commissioner Garcia to be back online?
Commissioner Garcia, if you are online, please come back into the conversation.
Yes, I'm, I'm back, thank you.
And then Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia.
Chair McLaughlin, uh, for your information, Vice Chair Contreras Leo has alerted staff that she did have to leave the meeting, so we do still have quorum though.
So Vice Chair Contreras Leo left the meeting?
Yes. Family emergency.
At eight, at six forty-five?
Yes.
Okay, and, um. All right. All right, so at this point in time, uh. Do we have any, does anybody have anything that they need to, uh, wish to disclose at this point in time regarding these items? I'll start with, uh, Commissioner Calderon.
I don't have anything to disclose.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Uh, nothing to disclose, start, thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Nothing to disclose, thank you.
Commissioner Garcia.
Nothing to disclose.
Okay, I have nothing to disclose at this point in time either. All right. So with that said, uh, Selena, you're gonna be doing the presentation for us?
Yes. Good evening, Chair McLaughlin, members of the planning commission. The project is for you tonight, uh, next slide please, is, uh, located at twenty-five thirty and twenty-five thirty-four Westminster Avenue. It's currently an undeveloped two-acre site, as shown in red on the screen, between the intersections of Westminster Avenue and Fair East Street. There are commercial leases to the north and east, and single-family residential neighborhood to the south of approximately fifty-five homes, and, uh, commercial development directly across the street to the right. Project also has access to open, open state rooftop on Westminster and Fair East Avenue. Next slide please. The next slide will just see some site photos of the, uh, vacant site, uh, wired vacant with, uh, some mature and ornamental trees and shrubs, and existing fencing around the perimeter of the property. And then not shown in the picture, there is a billboard on site which is proposed to be demolished. Next slide please. Project includes, um, the proposed development of eighty-five multi-family residential units for rent, which would include one, two, three, and four-bedroom storefronts. The project is a one-hundred percent affordable housing project, which primarily geared towards family housing. Fifty-eight of the units would be designated for extremely low-income households. These are households that earn between zero to thirty percent of the area median income, and this would be the three- and four-bedroom unit. The other affordable units would be twenty-six permanent supportive housing units, permanent supportive housing units for persons experiencing client homelessness or at risk for homelessness. And specifically, these permanent, um, supportive housing units are, are targeting, uh, youth that are transitioning out of the foster system, and these would be the one- and two-bedroom units. In addition, one unit would be a living onsite property manager. The project proposes a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces, which is a ratio of one-point-six pages per unit, and doesn't include forty-two tandem stalls. There's a community room, meeting room, and onsite service provider offices, laundry rooms, bike rooms, and a public race, both park and picnic area on Drive, and private patios and balconies and rooftop patios for the individual units themselves. Next slide please. Uh, as I mentioned, the project is a one-hundred percent affordable housing project, and in July of twenty nineteen, the Community Development Agency, which is our housing division, issued a request for proposal to support the development of affordable housing projects in our city. In response, four proposals were received and agreed by, a review panel consisting of city staff and applicant consultants, and community development partners, which operated proposal. Community development partners have a portfolio of over twenty-two projects, which comprises over sixteen hundred units, and includes three projects in San Ana, which is San Antonio, the Aqua and Orchard. In April of this year, the City Council approves a free commitment of almost four million dollars of affordable housing funds for the subjet project. And in July, the applicant submitted their application to the planning division for review and processing, and also held a virtual sunshine awareness meeting to overview the project. In November, um, in following the sunshine awareness meeting, the public works agency held a virtual meeting to overview the traffic impact analysis for the project and future capital improvement in the area. And most recently in December, the applicant held a follow-up virtual meeting, which is to provide a status update of the project of the planning commission meeting. Next slide please. Here you see the site plan, the development consists of two buildings, Building A and B, with heights that vary from three to four stories. The site is being designed to push the building, which is thoughtful to Westminster Avenue, away from the single-family dwellings, uh, to the south, and portions of the building that are closest to the single-family residential homes that appear tier-down to three stories in height. Measurable access will be from Westminster Avenue, as shown with the blue arrows on the screen, which would be a right turn in and right turn out access only, um, and will provide access to the site and the parking lot, to the rear, which has a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces, including two tandem stalls, which are seen in the middle of the parking lot, and a few tandem stalls which are adjacent to the playground. The site plan has been designed so that there are no drive-only direct access to measurable access to here on Drive, which is to local residential street to the east, which is the west, and the, uh, when there is a property, it can be planted with trees to provide additional layer of privacy along the property lines. Next slide please. Here you'll see the cross-section of the development. As you can, um, uh, through the cross-section, the playground, the parking lot, driven to suffer in setback between the multifamily development and the single-family, uh, homes, with setbacks at sixty feet to the west and a hundred and eighty-five feet to the south. So, uh, we have three cross-sections here, the top one is the north-to-south cross-section, so starting on the right side of the screen, we start at Westminster, which is the north side of the site. Um, there is a sixty-foot, uh, setback, which is the playground, uh, on Huron, and then the single-family homes to the south. Um, the building heights, which are highlighted in blue, are for thirty-five elements of the building, which are the three-story elements, and what's shown in green are the four-story elements, which are forty-seven feet in height. The middle of this screen is the cross-section, which is also north to south, which is at the middle of the site, um, where you'll see Westminster Avenue, starting from the right, the residential building, the courtyard in between the second half of the residential building, and then tier-down to three stories, and a hundred and eighty-five setback to the residential homes to the south, which would be along Ashes Street. And the bottom cross-section is the east-to-west cross-section. This is where the development would be closest to the adjacent single-family homes, and which is only a small segment of the overall development where this configuration occurs. At this portion of the development, a fifty-six foot F is provided between the multifamily buildings, which are three stories at that location, and the decent low-income home along Huron Drive. I just want to note, under the existing commercial selling, the maximum building height is thirty-five feet, and three stories, with the minimum setback of twenty feet from residential homes. Next slide please. The next couple of sites will be some renderings of the project. The first one is a view looking south from Westminster and Huron Drive. The project includes a contemporary design, the materials include, uh, black tile entree, simulated wood veneer siding, satin board siding, art-bracketed plaster in a mix of neon and school colors. Next slide please. And from the next rendering, we'll see these, um, looking from the commercial development to the west, looking east on Huron Drive, uh, where the future residential building at the corner, and the capacity accessible park, which are playground, um, on site. Next slide please. The project includes, uh, is a total of a hundred and thirty-six spaces, and with forty-two tandem stalls, with a ratio of one-point-six parking spaces per unit. Under, uh, the table here has one scenario, and there are three items to walk over. The first one is a state law requiring cities to approve the case, parking reaches a point five spaces per unit for one-hundred percent affordable development projects that are within a half-mile of the major transit stop. Uh, this project, as I mentioned, will be a hundred percent affordable, and has access to the transit stop, uh, bus transit service on Westminster Avenue, Fair East Street. So under state law, the project only requires forty-four parking spaces, um, and has an excess sum of ninety-two parking spaces without high design. In addition, the project's applicant, um, traffic and parking consultants, fair and steers, prepared a parking study, which documents that a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces are adequate for the, uh, development of this site and supportive housing project of that. Um, this is based on actual counts that were collected from the Orchard, which is another affordable housing development in our city that the developer manages and develops, and, um, uh, allocate the affordable housing parking study, which took campus there affordable housing projects here at LA, and came up and derived, uh, changes that were applicable to let this project on site. Well, based on both data sets, the project demands for parking may be less than what proposed for the project, which is a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces. In addition, the applicant did prepare a parking management plan, which requires an onsite property manager, uses stickers of, of stickers to allocate parking to residents. Um, and allocate parking as, as, uh, so one space for one and two-bedroom units, one-point-five spaces for three-bedroom units, so this means that some units will have one space for three-bedroom and some will have two, and that would be based on the demands needed for, um, each unit, which the property manager would manage. And then two parking spaces for four-bedroom, for each four-bedroom unit, and this would be specifically the tandem stalls on the site. This will also include gas parking spaces, EYA, and electric vehicle parking spaces, gas parking spaces for onsite service providers, and one U and a regular space. I also want to note that there is permanent parking currently, um, along Huron Drive, um, for the single-family homes to the west of the site, um, basically from the project's right down to Sixth Street. Next slide please. The M and D and a series of technical settings were prepared for the project. Um, the M and D was available for public viewing comment for twenty days, as required by Sutra, from November sixth to November twenty-sixth. The total of two comments were received, one from, uh, OCSA, which was standard comments, and the second was from a resident. One from O C F A, which was standard comments, and the second was from a resident. There were no specific comments on how the sequel document was inadequate or how the project should be exceed any sequel threshold. And written statements to be comments were prepared and incorporated into the final M E D along with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which includes mitigation measures for the project. These mitigation measures are for biological resources, social resources, genetic soil, noise, and tranquil cultural resources. Some of the commentary that the sunshine meeting, yeah, sunshine meeting was, were in regards to traffic and noise, and those are covered in a manual document as well. A traffic impact analysis was prepared and reviewed by the public works agency. I'm just going to overview some of the traffic details for the project. The project is expecting to produce about four hundred and sixty two new trips, with thirty one trips during the peak hour and peak hour, and thirty seven trips in the P M peak hour. In addition, comments were raised about cut through traffic on Sixteenth and Huron Drive, from the area of Sixteenth to Huron to then Westminster, which is shortcut to the project, and that was analyzed. In addition, eighty three additional trips are projected to be produced on this project, and those will be agreed. However, the meter of those numbers, the new trips in overall, on the local streets, exceeding the threshold for people for the project. The project, however, will be contributing to its fair share contributions, your monetary contributions for overall improvement at Westminster Avenue, Berry Street, Southwest Drive and Westminster, and Sixteenth and Berry Street. Comments were also raised in regards to noise. And as I mentioned, with the mitigation measures related to this project for the M E D, there are required for exterior building materials to reduce interior noise level, and also to have these features on and make two balconies that are included to the Westminster or Berry Street. It will also require a basel high wall between the playground area and the single family home. And the traffic, overall traffic generated by the project, which trips, will not increase traffic noise levels at one point five feet in N E L, and therefore would not exceed any sequel threshold standards. Next slide please. The project includes our general plan amendment twenty twenty dash zero seven, which is a proposed amendment to change the general plan that Randy's designation from general commercial to urban neighborhood. Now see the two figures on the, or images on the screen. On the left is the existing designation and adjacent land use space, which shows the site in O as general commercial. And the image on the right is the proposed to extend the changing of designation to urban neighborhood. The urban neighborhood land designation allows for a more residential use space, which the current general plan designation of commercial is not allowed for. So the urban neighborhood allows for this type of development along with other residential development opportunities, like townhomes, multifamily homes, work opportunities, and neighborhood retail and services. The urban neighborhood designation under our current general plan allows for four area ratios of point five to three, and this project is consistent with that four area ratio of one point zero nine and forty two to one for acres. In addition, the project supports several goals and policies of the general plan, including to provide quality housing, various affordable housing levels, and living experiences that accommodate any homeless residents and workforce, and how various income levels ensure there is great and efficient community. Next slide please. A mainly application with twenty twenty dash zero five to change the general designation for the subject property from commercial to specific development number ninety seven. Again, the two images on the screen show the existing conditions on the left and proposed on the right. The specific development needs a written document, which will include site specific objectives and development standards, such as specific types and parking standards and setbacks, which are specific to this project and the site design that's been shown on the screen and presented tonight, and also within the chat report. Just want to note that there are some other specific developments in the eye along Westminster and Two Street, and that this, the proposed specific development is similar in its identity with other existing multifamily developments in the area and the specific developments that are in question. Along with the harbor and beach transit corridor, the design, which is to the west, along Seventeenth and Westminster. Next slide please. And with that, that concludes my staff's presentation for tonight, and there will be certain comments. And this project, hopefully tonight, would be that we recommend actions for the city council approval, like the environmental, grass, and natural plan, and then the amendment application. Also want to note that the project applicant, their team, development team, management team, architect, parking and traffic consultant are also on the line.
Thank you. Thank you, Selena. Does the commission have any questions of Selena at this point in time? I'll start with Commissioner Calderon.
Sir, thank you for that very thorough presentation. I want to actually go back, if it's possible, to go like to the last slide, the very last slide of the presentation, if it's possible. So, working from open air, that traffic was, is one of my concerns. And I know that you stated in the presentation that there is currently, what is it called, a parking permit for the residents that live around there. And is it Sixteenth and Burton Drive the only street that required the parking permit? Or is it all of the stated area in yellow that has that?
Thank you for my question. It is not all of the area that's shown in yellow. There are two parking permit areas within the sixty five homes, which are directly to the south. So that's any home to option six or one other. The permit parking, one portion is the six single family homes directly to the west of the development option. And so it would be anything north of Sixteenth Street along Huron, so there you see that pink color for the commercial designation.
Okay.
Those big towns there. There is additionally permit parking on Glen Arbor Street, that whole cul-de-sac. So there are areas though of Sixteenth, that doesn't have permit parking. And then that last segment of Huron Drive, south of Sixteenth Street, would not have traffic parking.
Got it. Thank you. And then just a second question that I have. So I know that the, the affordable housing project that is in discussion is going to be for, you know, individuals who, to use and at risk, people that have been like at risk for, you know, a variable income. My question is, in the parking situation for the community that's being built, how many of those parking stations, or is, how many parking stations are there going to be for visitors? Is there the above answer for that?
Yes, based on the parking management plan that was drafted for the project, it would be four, four guest parking spaces.
Four guest parking spaces, okay. I actually, I want to just kind of comment on that, you know, because this, uh, this community is going to be housing that type of population. You know, as a social worker, you know, I, I think about, you know, clients that live in these types of residential communities, and how hard it is sometimes to feed clients, you know, based on, you know, the limit that there is for parking. So I was wondering if like, you know, there would be any, like, is there any situation or possibility to increase that just for the sake of, you know, people that need services that are going to be living there? You know, like any case workers, social workers, that, you know, that can come and visit the, the individuals that are living there? I don't know if we could propose whether to do additional parking for them, if that's possible?
I think the applicant can speak to, and a parking consultant can speak to the site design and how they feel that the parking interview is not adequate. But I also want to note that the parking management plan, the parking standards for this project is specific to this development. We do have options for changes that you have to keep in mind, the site configuration and constraints that might be there. And that the parking management plan was drafted, so it can't change and be changed over time, you know, based on demand. So what they came up with initially was the four guest parking spaces. And then it still would allow for four staff parking spaces to be used during daytime hours, and then management could run hours to use at night for residential parking. So there would be staff parking for those on site, there would be competitors.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, Commissioner Calderon, any other questions? No, that's it. Thanks. Commissioner Garcia.
Yes, just one question, Selena, that, and maybe the applicant is the right person to answer the question. But any green elements that are being used in this proposed development?
The applicants are proposed for a long time, but this project would be required to meet the intelligent green building code requirements with, you know, low flow, plumbing fixtures, energy efficient lighting, light fixtures, and mechanical equipment, all of those standards. But anything above and beyond, the applicant can speak to hopefully during that comment period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Marcy.
Yes, thank you. I do have one question. You mentioned the setback requirements from the previous, the commercial zone. What are the, what's the current minimum setback we have with this development? From residents?
So I'm going to get commercial zoning, which the project, which the site currently is zoned as, it would be twenty feet for adjacent to residence, any of the residential structures.
Okay, currently, as this project is designed, what's the minimum? What's the most restrictive setback, I guess? I'm looking at the diagram on.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I, that would be.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that one, here.
No, no, okay. Fifty feet. And that would be from east to west, between one of the single family homes there and the closest, that's the number I want to have on.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Marcy?
No, thanks, not this time.
Commissioner Newin?
No, no question, thank you. Okay, I think, Selena, based on some of the comments that have already been made and questions, I think most of my questions will probably evolve around the applicants themselves, so I'll wait until the applicants. So having said that, does anyone else have any questions of staff at this point in time?
Okay, hearing done? Then what we'll do is, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
Yes, we received a total of six comments. Two were in favor of the project, I'm sorry. Two were in opposition of the project, and four were in favor. And those have been distributed to the commission and posted on the city's website.
Okay, all right, so six, six communications, four in favor, two not.
Correct.
All right. With that said, we will open the public hearing at this point in time. And does the applicant have anything that they would like to comment or discuss?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Brian Hendricks, with Melchis Realty, representing the applicant. And I don't have too much to add, as Selena did a great job walking through the details of the project. I do want to mention, you know, our overall mission and purpose with this, with this project that we're proposing is to provide dignified, really great housing for those that need it most in the city center. While at the same time, doing it in a way that works closely and communicates with, with the neighbors and the people that are obviously impacted by the development coming in on what is currently vacant land. So we're trying to be sensitive to the needs of the existing community, while at the same time creating substantial new housing units for a population that can benefit so much from it. And we also have a very high value on quality design and having a building that really adds to the fabric of the city, being on a fairly prominent east west street in Westminster there and in Santa Ana. We wanted to present well, the street furniture as well. And so we thank you for hearing the item, while also we're very thankful to get the city council's support for funding through the affordable housing. Our AP number months ago. And so, and I'll also let Kyle Payne, the lead developer from Community Development Partners, interpret himself. And of course, our team, we have our, our lead architects on the call, Brian Miloszewski, and Paul Herman, a parking and traffic consultant from Fair and Peers as well, we're all available for questions.
Yeah, hi, it's Kyle Payne, it's Kyle Payne, Community Development Partners. I just sort of thank everybody for the time tonight, and the fantastic presentation by Selena. Open to answering any further questions, but I do believe that the, the big details of the project have been answered. But again, here to answer anything else, so thank you all.
Any else from the applicant who wants to present or discuss anything at this point in time?
I think we'll probably just address questions or whatever else that might be at this point.
All right, that sounds good. We'll start off with Commissioner Calderon. Would you have any comments or questions if you'd like to ask this?
No comments or questions at this time, like you said, the only, well, sorry, I guess comments. The only comment I had was just from earlier, you know, with the, the parking situation, just available for, for any visitors that are, you know, especially like service workers, social workers, and so forth, you know. I think it's just very mindful for that, just based on experience as well, you know, working with clients who, who live in affordable homes, and how challenging it is to meet with them just for the cause, for the reason of like, you know, limited amount of parking slots there, you know. So just something to take note on. But other than that, I mean, thank you so much, and yeah, it's a great project too, something to look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Garcia.
Yes, I have a question or two. The first is, I, I think Selena mentioned that there would be some rooftop access or patios. I don't see them laid out anywhere in the exhibit elevation. Can, is that something that's still being determined on, you know, how it's going to look? Or can you give us an insight to that?
Hello, hello, everybody. My name's Brian Miloszewski. I'm part of the design team, and I just want to thank everybody for their time. That's really a question, a lot of information to sort of digest at this time. So there are, actually every unit has a balcony or ground floor patio. And then most of the outdoor community spaces are within the publicly accessible playground and open space, as well as a pair of courtyards. There is a couple of rooftop, not rooftop, third, fourth floor community spaces, pretty modest in size, but one of the provide a variety of common area outdoor spaces. Um, so they are sort of towards the south left of the building at the corner of Huron and Westminster. And then the other one is sort of towards the southeast corner of the east building. Um, and again, they're both on the fourth floor, and they're pretty modest in size, mostly sort of seating and, um, just small gathering spaces.
So at this time, is, uh, used to visit a top for open space residences?
Not the rooftop. The rooftop would be, uh, uh, more likely desert, uh, dedicated to, uh, solar panels and mechanical equipment. Um, all the property screen, we've already sort of designed that into the design.
And that's a perfect segue to my next question, which was, kind of the environmental, uh, generally, uh, green additions that you have that you perhaps, uh, educated on now? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, California is, uh, at the, the leading edge of sustainability and, um, also because of the funding sources, um, at the portfolio of housing, we are further, um, we are further encouraged to, um, incorporate sustainable design throughout the project. And so there will be, um, uh, uh, power generation onsite, uh, through solar panels, um, on, on top of the rooftop. Um, sustainable, uh, stormwater management throughout the site, so the idea being not to contribute to the surround, not to input, uh, burden on the surrounding, uh, stormwater infrastructure. Um, and then, um, we have a significant amount of, uh, bicycle parking as well as, uh, electric vehicle parking as well as, um, a number, we already will, on day one, there'll be, um, excuse me, uh, four, three parking stalls, uh, for electric vehicles, there'll be additional stalls that will be, um, ready for conversion to EV, um, come the time that it becomes useful. Um, and then on top of that, uh, incorporating sustainable materials, um, low-flow and low-energy, um, fixtures throughout the project. Um, and that will actually be helped through our central laundry facilities that we might even be able to explore, sort of gray water. But that's sort of cutting edge, um, so we want to be cautious about that going forward. So those are just some of the things at this sort of, um, early level of design, have you been thinking, uh, about sustainability?
That's great. Thank you so much.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Nguyen? Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Marcy, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, um. Yeah, I'd like to thank the applicant for taking on this project, it's such a critical need in the community for this type of housing project. Um, and all the extra sustainable features you've incorporated. Um, it's like you've addressed issues of scale and setbacks and, um, uh, it looks like a really successful project. Um, I do have a concern about, uh, uh, architecture along Westminster. Um, you mentioned you really wanted to present, um, present the high-quality look along that street, it's a major arterial. And, um, just the, uh, you know, when we do, uh, have affordable housing, you know, I look at what we've done in French Park and you walk around there, drive around, and, um, there is affordable housing there, but you never know it because it's just so well-done. And I just think the, the deep level of detail on, um, Westminster is, it could be upgraded a little bit or, or, I guess, developed a little more, um, kind of a manneristic, um, let's well call them, uh, way of doing the arches is just, uh, this kind of departure from what we've seen from the, the developments that were previously referenced. So it's, I'm wondering if you'd be willing to work with staff to, um, work that through a little more?
Yes, thank you for the comment, Commissioner. And we, we actually are in, in some discussions with staff and are looking forward to the, uh, the commission's input on, um, on some of the design elements, so we're, you know, we're very much, um, in, in the conversation for about how to make any, you know, adjustments, not to the, you know, to the overall design, to be able to put some of those elements to, to improve all we can.
Okay, that, the, uh, the, um, yeah, I agree with the development, you know, as it faces the, the, uh, residents. It's, um, really a nice development. I'm just concerned about the, the street side elevations.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, um, Tom, any, any other comments? Um, no, that's, that's all I have at the moment, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Nguyen?
Um, I would like to thank the applicant to, uh, thing into the film, into some development, a great, great need for the city, um, especially for the resident in the area of the affordable housing, um, you know, with, um, this is very, very, very important, uh, project and, and very great people are there, and you would have my support in this project. Thank you.
Okay, um, I, I have a couple of comments. I, I want to go back to what, um, Miguel was talking about, uh, earlier about the services. And, and, uh, I understand that his concern, and I share the same concern with you guys, that, you know, four parking spaces doesn't seem to be a lot for- that, but are there locations on this, within this, this project that are actually put aside for services to come in and work with the, the people in the facility, i- in this, in this project? Um, rather than, you know, people coming in and going to somebody's home, are there going to be locations? And are there going to be services that are going to be available on a daily basis in this project?
Yeah, this is Kyle Payne with the CDP, the developer, and yeah, we, we have, uh, offices and spaces for, uh, case management and supportive services as well as, you know, uh, property management and, uh, onsite oversight. So yeah, there is definitely, uh, space accessible, uh, for residents to, uh, receive services and meet with their case managers and yet resident services coordinator.
Okay, um, good, that's, that's, that's one thing, uh, so there are, but are there going to be any permanent services on the, on the site? I know when, I know when we talked about the Aqua project, uh, when it was under approval, under request for approval from the, from the commission, um, there were some services that were planned on being onsite with the Aqua project. Do we have, do we have that same situation with this situ- with this particular project?
Yes, that's exactly, that's exactly it. I mean, this project is a mix of, uh, both family housing and then permanent supportive housing. So there'll be services for both populations and offices and, and office space for meetings with, uh, the tenants and the services provider.
There are no-
Available, unavailable.
Okay, there are, uh, I, I'm assuming at this point in time, there are no, um, retail or any kind of, any kind of, uh, uh, well, any kind of retail whatsoever on the, onsite?
That's correct, yeah. Instead of, you know, the ground floor, there'll be our, um, our community room, uh, leasing office and management office, uh, the playground area, and it's publicly accessible, as well as services offices, all on the ground floor.
Okay, and, you know, the, there was a question, there was a point made by Selena with regards to parking management plan. Is that parking management plan available at this point in time? I did not see it in the package, maybe I missed it. Uh, yeah, Selena didn't do it on camera. Oh, yeah, I did. I'm, I'm unsure if it's in your package, but I think it is, but. Selena, has it been presented to us in the package?
Uh, to, to the, yes, it's on page two dash seventy-six of the staff report, um, as it's actually an exhibit of, uh. And then also the development does include provisions to, um, not allowing commercial tenants as, as far as the office spaces onsite. And, um, there was also one question about, um, what location of the roof deck. And that is also shown on the open space exhibit in our community commission package, which is on page two dash sixteen-four for the areas in light green on the fourth level.
Okay, so let me just, give me a second. Two dash sixty-four is what you said?
Uh, seventy-six.
Two dash seventy-six. Okay, so two dash seventy-six. So one bedrooms get twenty-three parking spaces. Two bedrooms get four. Three bedrooms get fifty. An ADA, we have five, so there's ADA and four guests, four staff. Where the, and the tandems, and the tandems are built inside of which units are getting the tandems? That's the four bedrooms?
Yeah, all of the four bedroom units would be two parking spaces, and that would be two spaces for a four bedroom.
So that's twenty-one, that's twenty-one tandem spaces. Okay? Okay, so this is, this is considered at this point in time, the entire package, parking?
Correct.
Yes?
And this, this development also requires a parking, it's a parking management plan. And that plan also includes, um, continual monitoring of the site and may alter the plan as needed.
So, and the reason why, uh, oh, this is just LA, sorry, my bad, okay. Alright, um. Question, I, maybe Selena, this is a question for you, but how long has this property been in the current condition that it's in?
Um, it's one of the exact years that, uh, for those, there were previously commercial developments on the site and it were demolished. Um, I know there's been some, oh, those four commercial developments, and those are currently on hold with this current application.
So we don't know how long this has been?
Ten years.
Uh, 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 a lot?
I can look that up and provide that information in just a moment.
And then the other thing is, all of the, all of the, all of the, uh, the, um, in, 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 ingress and ingress of the property is all on Seventh and Seventeenth Street slash Westminster. Nothing is on Huron, correct?
Correct.
Okay?
And, and this is Kyle, this is Kyle Payne with CDP, I've been looking, uh, at the history of the property. It says in the nineteen-sixties, this was developed, uh, as a commercial, uh, building. That is the first time that was, uh, officially developed.
I'm sorry, what, what was it?
Well, uh, nineteen-sixties is when the first, uh, commercial development on the site was, was done.
Right, but, and, and my question is, how long has it been an abandoned lot?
Yeah, this is, this is Brett Underst speaking, and I, I do, uh, live very close by to the area. And actually, uh, pursued the study from a, uh, Mr. Ahern, it was, it was Ahern Rentals, uh, when it was last in operating business. And of course, we'll have to, I'm going to say it's about five, five, seven, five to seven years that it's been, Ahern left, as an estimate.
Okay.
Yeah, two thousand and fif- two thousand and fifteen it was demolished. Uh, I'm looking at our page one, so I, two thousand and fifteen was when the building was demolished.
And you shared us, so in fact, our, some of them are-
Okay, that's fine. Okay, then, uh, who's, who's going to be, I know that, um, when you, when you look at the Orchard, the, that's a partnership with Community Development Partners and Mercy House. Who's going to be involved with this particular project?
This is also, this is also Mercy House as well, uh, looking partner in this project.
This is also Mercy House. Okay. Alright.
And Larry's actually on the line, if he'd like to, uh, um, he had trouble, I doubt he has, but I can, uh, patch him in.
Larry, Larry, Larry has trouble from time to time, but that's okay, Larry. Larry Haynes.
Uh, you need, give me, give me one second, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get, uh, patch him in here, one second.
Patching me the call.
Well, there you are. Larry, I think you're on now with, uh, with the presentation. Yeah, Larry, that, I, um, it seems there, earlier quite a bit about, you know, traffic patterns with social workers and so forth. And, um, I just wanted to reassure that, that my staff will be there, will actually be onsite doing the same services such as, uh, as at the Orchard and Aqua and, and, and other, uh, facilities as well.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Sure.
Alright, um, I don't have any other questions at this point in time. I don't, so, how much, with the device of solar panels and everything else, how much of the energy do you expect to, to derive from the solar panels as far as usage versus, uh, versus capability?
Uh, we haven't, it-
Oh, good. And is so, is solar going to be, you know, when the building is put in, is solar going to be, um, with the, with the building itself? Or is it going to be something that's going to be added on later on?
Um, the intention would be to have, uh, the solar panels installed as part of, uh, should be building, the, the project develop, the initial project development, so on day one, um, having the solar panels. Um, honestly, we have not done the modeling yet, so as far as how much energy will be produced, um, versus how much will be used. Our goal is to at least have common areas and, um, sort of house, um, electricity used covered by, um, on-site generation. Um, that is our minimal goal, but, um, like I said, we haven't modeled it yet. That'll be sort of, uh, one of the upcoming phases of design.
Okay, um, with regards to, I, here's a question I have, um, it's saying, I think it's something with you or Ty, not Ty, but Tate, uh, with regards to parking, is permanent parking surrounding this facility? Uh, but I'm assuming that people in the facility itself will not have the ability to get per- permanent parking in the surrounding area.
Uh, correct, so the current area that are permit parking only would only allow for those residents that are within that area to, um, apply for catch permit.
Okay, is this an area at this point, I mean, there's very few areas in Santa Ana that aren't issues when it comes to parking. But is this an area that is obviously a concern from everybody's standpoint?
Uh, Mr. Troy, this is, this is Jay David. Um, it, you're right, just, just about, um, just about every area in the city has, has some concern. This, I would, I would rate it generally medium. Um, as Selena pointed out, there are two blocks within the four or five that already have permanent parking and then north of Westminster, there are a few more blocks. I mean, it, it's not one of the worst, it's not the light- I mean, it, it's not one of the worst, it's not the lightest. There, there are, there are some concerns obviously about, uh, parking, uh, and, and I have to, yeah.
Yeah, I have to assume that the property across the street that used to be at one point in time recently, State of Brothers, is no longer State of Brothers. Um, I'm assuming that, um, I've heard that Gonzalez Market will probably be moving into that location. Uh, but I'm assuming that parking will not be, there will not be, there will not be any overnight parking or parking available, other than to the patrons of the, the market itself. I would imagine not. Okay? All right. That's all I have as far as questions go of the applicant, um. Does the applicant have any last statements they'd like to make at this point in time before we open up the public hearing to the people calling in?
I'd just like, this is Kyle Fain, the CDP, I just, I just wanted to say thank you, uh, thank, um, planning commission for, for listening to our project. Thank you to the staff for all the efforts in getting us to where we are. And, uh, we're excited to bring this project, which we feel is spreading immediately in the city, um, to fruition. So, thank you all.
Okay, thank you. And Selena, just a couple of things you and I talked about earlier in the day, and that is, is that, um, we did not, this was not a project that came in front of us as a work study. And the reason why it wasn't brought to us as a work study was because...
I, Chair, yes. Yes, there was no work study session on this project. The project did have some timeline, um, in trying to get to the council in order to apply for their, um, very competitive funding, uh, source, which is MGA in Mary. And, um, the applicant submitted their plans in July and with the secret document and a lot of people's hearts, there was not a lot of time in their schedule for a work study session.
And the funding, the funding that's available on this project is available when?
Uh, I'll have the applicant speak if you have specific questions. But the application that's specific to the January timeframe is a no place by home, um, application. And, but there are several funding sources that the applicant pursues.
Okay, so can we get an answer for that question from the applicant?
Yeah, uh, this is Kyle Fain again, uh, in regards to the funding available for this project? If that's a question? Yeah, uh, yes.
I'm just paying you, yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The, I'm just asking for the timeline with regards to, right now, this is the fourteenth of December, where we're reviewing it from the standpoint of the planning commission. It'll go in front of the council, um, in January, early January.
Right.
And, and, and I'm just asking, when is the funding, the funding requirement date is when?
The application date for the no place by home funding, which is administered through, uh, it's, you know, California Housing and Community Development, that we are applying for, is due on January ninth.
Okay.
We are, yeah, we're being, getting ready for that application as we speak.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Those are my questions, so at this point in time, uh, we'll open up the public hearing for, uh, comments and questions from others? Secretary, do we have anybody that would like to, at this point in time, comment on this project?
If you'd like to speak on this matter, please dial star nine. You will be called upon by the last four numbers of your phone number. When you are called, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes.
Mail please eight, two nine. For this matter, I would like to respond. I would like to. It's a lot of, it's a lot of noise.
respond currently that the plan for the proposed development is putting cars parked directly against the property tax line between those properties on Sixteenth Street and on Huron Drive. They're not building a fence, they're not building a setback, they're not building anything to prevent from intrusion from parking onto the existing parkway. How do you respond? Okay, we'll take that into consideration when we, when we take in the closing comments for this item. So, you have one, one question. Is there another question you might have at this point in time? Yes, there is. Go ahead. You have basically ignored the existing neighborhood in the examination of the consequences of the proposed project. I want you to examine the consequences of the proposed project on the existing neighborhood and the consequences thereof. The city is under a lot of pressure from the Governor of California to basically approve this project. The county likewise, a lot of pressure to approve this project. The only one supporting the interests of the neighborhood is the SECA amendment, and we are trying to go around it and basically bypass it. I basically oppose that bypass. Okay? Any other items that you have? Oh, that's it. Okay. Thank you very much, Chris. We appreciate your questions, and they're so noted.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four numbers, five, three, zero, three. Please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name and your position. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Kimberly Adams. I'm the Housing Advocacy Program Manager with Orange County United Way. Um, Orange County United Way are speaking tonight to express our support for the rest of housing development under consideration this evening. In addition, the eighty-five affordable housing units, there's a set aside for twenty-six permanent supportive units for unhoused neighbors. Um, never before has there been a stronger desire to end homelessness and create housing in Orange County. Housing affordability is a persistently growing challenge throughout Orange County for families, veterans, seniors, um, and individuals as home and rent prices continue to decline. Due to these rising costs, households have to spend over thirty percent of their income on housing, and a growing number are spending more than fifty percent on their income, on their income on housing. Prior to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, affordable housing was already a growing need in communities throughout the county. Given the disproportionate impact the pandemic has had on working-class families, affordable homes will be even more needed as we look to rebuild our local economy. In two thousand and eighteen, United Way launched United and Homelessness, a powerful collaboration among Orange County, Orange County's top businesses, philanthropic, government state-based, and nonprofit leaders committed to ending homelessness and ensuring housing and services are available for every individual who may need them. United and Homelessness has been a powerful voice in advocating for housing, housing as the solution to end homelessness and housing instability, which can be devastating to families and children. We have always supported and maintained that affordable, stable housing is the building block to family success. Thank you for your approval of the rest of the project tonight. We are grateful for your courage and willingness to improve the lives of so many. I'm obviously in support of this project. Thank you to the planning commissioner.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you. Uh, next caller with the last four numbers, three, zero, zero, two. Please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position, and your position on the matter. You have three minutes. Caller with the last three numbers, three, zero, zero, two. Please dial star six to unmute yourself. You are still muted. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Um, first of all, thank you very much for taking my call. Um, my name is Benjamin. Um, I am the resident located on Sixteenth Street in Huron, which means right at the corner. Uh, my concern for you is after you have this home, beautiful home, you consider build up, they're gonna take Sixteenth Street to get into their end and off the property, which means where I live is right at the corner. Every day I see a lot of cars passing by. Imagine you have more buildings coming up like that, more people living in the area would create more traffic. I have children that live in the area. She play along the street, and I see a lot of cars drive by at the corner, didn't even stop. She keep speeding up, and they avoid the cars that coming after them. I can see many accidents going to happen. Imagine if you have the property come out to three or six, how are you gonna answer if something happened to our children? The people that live in Huron Drive and the Sixteenth Street. Can you, uh, need put the stop sign right at the corner of Sixteenth Street in Huron in order to avoid people speeding up, avoid people, uh, not even looking when they're getting a left turn on Sixteenth Street, or they make a right turn on Huron Street? And my next question for you is, are there any way you avoid using our property, our street to get into your property? Because I feel like this create a lot of traffic, and I know it's gonna bring a lot of accidents, not even crime, or maybe a lot of pollution, like that that I can see that happened on the street already. Imagine people that walk by and the police make the speed, and our property going down in the value. I want all of you to reconsider this, especially the chairman and the council. I want you to study carefully because you have eighty-five homes with very minimal parking. How can you do enough so many people, two, three, uh, four buildings with very minimal parking? And what happens if people pop on our property? Gonna come out? Like, something that's gonna make people upset? We don't wanna do that. You know, when you live in a very beautiful environment, and now this property comes up, it's gonna bring a lot of crime and jazz, and, you know, like, I, I can imagine what's gonna happen in the future, but I can see that you should make an entrance from what means to them instead of going in through our neighborhood to get into your property. This is unbelievable. I, I need all of you, the board, the planner, the city, you to sit down and study this carefully, because you make a big property, and you use our street to get into your property. That's unbelievable. I mean, how can you do that? Can you just get our street in a very peaceful street instead of like using our street to create more accidents and more traffic? And what I think that you like study on the traffic is not the right at this moment. You know why? Because with this pandemic, okay?
Benjamin.
I don't mind very little.
Benjamin, can you, can you wrap? Can you wrap up what you wanna say? Your three minutes are, are, are up?
Okay. Um, well, first of all, I want, I want you to study this carefully, especially the property.
Okay?
And then think about if you ever approve this, uh, this property, I want you to put the stop sign right at the corner, which means my house is right at the corner on Sixteenth and Huron, to stop the traffic that's going so fast, it's gonna create accidents. And that's how I can frame the house.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. If there are any other callers that would like to speak on this matter, please indicate your desire to do so by dialing star nine now. I'll wait a few seconds to see if we have anyone else. Chair, there are no other callers.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, we'll bring this back to the, uh, applicant at this point in time. Um, do you have any, any final comments that you'd like to make at this, at this time with respect to some of the comments that came from the public, or any other comments that you think you would like to have at this point?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, Brian Henders. A couple, a couple responses to the, the last gentleman as far as, uh, you know, a, a stop sign in Sixteenth and Huron, although, you know, that's a, a city, it's, um, of course, we would, um, you know, we would be supportive of that, um, understand that it needs to network out in the city if that's something that was, uh, too good to get accomplished. And he also, you know, I think I would mention, uh, about ingress or egress being on Westminster rather than through the neighborhood. Um, our only ingress and egress is on Westminster, and that was, um, you know, done purposely in order to not have, um, in, in, in ingress, egress points on, on Huron. Um, so I did wanna address those, those two points.
Okay? Any other, any other comments? Nothing else as far as the public? Having said that, uh, since there's no further comments from the public, no further comments from the applicant, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Does anyone, would anybody at this point in time wanna make a comment or question, Commissioner Aldra?
No questions, uh, at this moment. Um, if you'd like to call, I, I appreciate every, every, uh, caller that came in. Um, I understand your concerns, and, uh, definitely there's something to, uh, to look into. Um, just, uh, going back to what the last caller's comment mentioned about the, uh, permission about traffic, I think it was very, uh, I'm not so sure when the city did a study on the traffic, um, but initially to pay close attention to, um, especially right now, like you mentioned, uh, we are in a pandemic, and, uh, traffic has reduced, uh, so we don't know what the option could be in the future, so if it comes into, uh, legislation, um, definitely, um, that's the only comment that I have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Garcia.
Yeah, I just would, uh, I'll just invite staff and the applicant to, uh, find a way to address the concerns of the community. I think, um, there, there seems to be either a misunderstanding or, um, yeah, misunderstanding the communication in terms of the, uh, parking permit. Uh, I, I think there was a misunderstanding where some of the community members believed that, um, there may or may not be an opportunity for residents of the new development to apply for permits on, um, the current residential streets. And so maybe, maybe a point of clarification going up for other community members to call would be in order, um, and, and, you know, in terms of, uh, other traffic concerns, I think it'd be important to address that to the community as well.
Okay. Commissioner Morrissey.
Uh, yes, I just, uh, have a couple of follow-up questions based on, uh, what the public had stated. Um, I, I was looking at where the, um, local elementary school would, that, um, serves this area is, and, uh, it's like it might be Fremont. Um, so I think, um, you know, when we're talking about safe routes for schools, um, that, you know, stop sign at, I think, from Huron might be warranted, but would that be something the city would do a traffic study or a study?
Hey, are you still with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and thank you, Commissioner Morrissey. Uh, what I would suggest is, is that you can let staff, um, go back and determine a open analysis, uh, for, for a traffic, I, I'm sorry, for a stop sign at that particular location. As, as you may know, uh, stop signs need to be warranted, um, to follow federal guidelines, et cetera. Um, and so, so we can certainly do that. We do that, or we will do that for that particular intersection. Um, I would suggest that it doesn't necessarily need to relate to the project, we'll do it because, uh, because the resident asked for it.
Okay. Tom, does that take care of?
Yeah.
Certainly, very much. I appreciate that. Um, I, I, I remember just jumping on Tom's comment too and say, you know, the applicant is, not the applicant, but the, the public speaker had mentioned that, uh, people were gonna be coming in on Sixteenth and Huron. Um, uh, you know, my question is, if I'm, if I'm currently heading south, heading north, north on Fairview, can I make a left-hand turn into Sixteenth Street?
Yes. I can. Yes.
So, people are apt to go down Sixteenth Street and then turn right onto Huron, and then turn right onto Westminster in order to get into the project?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, and in fact, that is, um, that was relatively closely studied in, in the traffic study. There was a determination of the volume, the daily volume of vehicles on Huron and Sixteenth Street, and then, um, compared to that, how many additional cars would, uh, would traverse that same route, exactly what you described. Um, and in fact, we, we had, uh, we did have a meeting with the neighborhood, virtual meeting with the neighborhood in early November to discuss that, and, and even bring up the option of, of, of building a median in the near term on share to, to prohibit that left turn. In fact, that's why I was... Yeah. If, if, uh, if I can, if I can continue then, um, we, we then surveyed the neighborhood, and, uh, we sent out sixteen, uh, sorry, sixty-six, uh, requests. We got back, um, seventeen, um, votes. Uh, one person requested the median. The remainder said no, they did not want the median. They didn't wanna lose that northbound left turn access from Fairview into Sixteenth, Sixteenth Street. Um, so, if I can add just a couple of more numbers, um, we, we do have, uh, the number of trips that were on, um, uh, the existing, the daily trips existing on Huron are around six hundred and forty a day, and we expect about eighty-three additional trips on Huron from the subject development. Um, and then on, um, on Sixteenth Street, there are about eleven hundred, almost twelve hundred daily trips on Sixteenth, Sixteenth Street. That's the daily volume. And, and again, we expect that about eighty-three, that the project will generate about eighty-three additional trips, uh, per day. Um, you know, percentage-wise, uh, one of those is thirteen percent, the other one is seven percent. That's, that's well less than what a capacity of a, um, a local street would be. Um, you know, whether, whether or not the, the neighborhood feels the exact same way is, you know, subject to, to how they feel, but, um, you know, again, we, and, uh, I think the traffic engineer see that, you know, the capacity of those local streets is much, much higher than, than what's out there today and what will be out there post this project.
Um, Commissioner Morrissey, do you have any other questions? Uh, no further questions. Thank you. Commissioner Millen? No questions. Thank you. Okay, um, did I, did I miss you, Commissioner Garcia?
No, you did not, thanks.
Okay. Um, I guess I have a couple of concerns based on some of the public comments, and I guess I'll go back to Chris Jacobson. Uh, supposedly, there are a number of, of emails that have come to the council, the mayor, and the commission, and yet no one seems to have this information at this point in time.
Selena will be addressing that comment?
Okay.
Hi, Chair, this is Selena, um, caller. The comments Mr. Jacobson submitted were in response to the mitigated negative declaration during that public review and comment period, um, which ended on November twenty-sixth. There were complete responses drafted for the final M and D, which is posted on the project webpage, um, in response to his comment letter, which is comment number two. And, um, I do not believe we received any e-comment, uh, any comment submitted to the e-comment at cityandarts.org email address, which is then forwarded to the planning commission secretary, um, and office staff and to you as commissioners.
So, in essence, the questions and concerns brought forth by Jacobson, by Mr. Jacobson, essentially, you were, they were reviewed and incorporated into the negative mitigation plan? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, final M and D for the project.
Okay, and, and we, we specifically got back to Mr. Jacobson on the basis of his questions and concerns, or did we just, or is it being interpreted to the input that was revised on the negative mitigation?
It's being interpreted as the responses incorporated as part of the final M and D, while those change, um, several emails and phone calls with Mr. Jacobson about the project. Um, we just did not receive any formal comment submitted during the, for the, um, after the public media review and comments, and also, um, you know, the comments that he said tonight were mainly in regards to the email not received, and then questions on preventing, um, or preventing vehicles cutting through on to Huron. And so, I do not believe that vehicles would be, um, crossing and closing parking stalls, curbs, and, um, park playgrounds, equipment to them exit on to Huron Drive and then in other locations for the base building. Um, and that's in regards to Mr. Jacobson, uh, comments. And I also did wanna speak to some of the other comments, uh, comments that were raised, which was the first one was, um, the second was, and that was in regards to permit parking. Um, I do want to, um, clarify also in regard to Commissioner Garcia, there is no permit parking right now on Sixteenth Street, so that is open for anyone of the public and any, um, residents to park on. The permit parking is only on Huron Drive north of Sixteenth Street, and then portions of Glen Arbor south of Sixteenth Street, um, which is gonna clarify those areas, so Sixteenth is open for parking. And, um, uh, just to this stop sign, uh, analysis, and then, uh, the traffic study, we take into account COVID, and our traffic, um, engineers have been based with this on other development projects and projects in the city, where they compare, um, most recent traffic data in the area and calculate a, um, percent increase, uh, based on our current count to account for what would, um, be, would be stripped right now according to. I think those were the comments that I heard. If there's anything else that happened to clarify, just, I just, I just want to...
Let me ask you the question, let me ask you the question, uh, and I just, looking at the, the, the layout of the property with regards to the housing, single-family homes to the left, the parking with, along the wall of the single-family homes, there is a wall and fence between the parking and the house, correct?
Yeah, so there is, um, existing fencing along the perimeter of the property, between the property and the single-family home, of what law.
So there's no, there's no wall or fencing from the playground to Westminster? It's open?
It is open. I believe that there is a provision that would allow for a three and a half, a three-foot, uh, fence if we wanted to include that around the playground, or along Huron Drive, the playground, that would be, that would be the area that I could potentially perceive then.
Uh, since it's open space at this point in time, do the neighborhoods, the surrounding neighborhood, Huron and Sixteenth and Umbrow, whatever the street is, uh, do they have access to the playground? Is it an open playground for the neighborhood?
Yes, the specific development, um, was written in a manner that the park, the playground and the picnic area, so the, um, which are, sorry, I don't have it, um, uh, would be remaining accessible to the public during daytime hours.
Okay, so that is accessibility?
Right. Um, the property manager would actually have to oversee that area and also maintain that area.
What's the open space that we have at this point in time, percentage of open space on this?
Um, the particular playground is five thousand square feet, that's a playground...
No, 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 no. I mean, the, just besides the playground, including the playground, including the playground, including the, the, including any other open balconies, et cetera, and everything else, what's the percentage of open space?
Um, an open space is fifteen percent of the total lot, without including lobbies, entry rooms, seating rooms, um, separate from the private open space balcony.
So it's, it's fifteen percent of, except for, with the exception of the, uh, the private balconies?
Right.
And the minimum, and the minimum requirement is typically, um, ten percent?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent, so it's, it's at the minimum requirements. Is that correct?
Correct. And in the specific development, there is no set standard, um, that is what we try to be for our multifamily development project.
Right, that's, I'm just looking at it from multifamily. Okay? All right, uh, go ahead. Selena, is there any other, any other comments with regards to the public comments that you wanna make?
Um, no, not at this point in time that I heard, but I'd be happy if the commissioners, um, having enough to answer any questions.
Okay. Um, do any of the commissioners have any final questions at this point in time? Commissioner Aldra? No questions. Commissioner Garcia?
And nothing further. Thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey? Um, nothing, no further. Thank you. Commissioner Millen? No, thank you. Okay, do we have, at this point in time, since there's no further questions or concerns, is there a motion that would, uh, that one would like to make at this point?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Morrissey.
Uh, motion to approve environmental review number twenty-twenty, that's forty-eight, general plan amendment number twenty-twenty dash oh-seven, and amendment application number twenty-twenty dash oh-five, um, with, um, also like to add conditions to, um, conduct one study for traffic control at two hundred and sixteen, and, uh, the applicant, uh, came concurrent to the staff on further development of the detailed scale of architectural elements on Westminster, and it would be taken to the planning commission for approval.
So, you're, you're asking that you come back to the planning commission? So you're, you're...
I think the department moved the project forward without the planning commission. I'm just asking if they work with staff to, um, to go up there.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, work with staff, I got you. Okay. All right, so that's the motion.
Time frame, so, I want to, uh, question.
Understand, agree. Do we have a motion? So, what, huh? Vice Secretary, do you know what's going on?
Um, yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's.
I'm glad I know what you're.
Uh, we're trying to see.
Can we mute that? Can we mute that?
Yes, we, we have muted them. Um, Commissioner Morrissey, I'm sorry, when you were, um, adding your conditions, your phone, um, did go out for a brief couple of seconds. Can you please, for the record, um, state both conditions that you would like to add to this, um, item?
Okay, thank you. Uh, first is, uh, conduct a warrant study for traffic control at Huron and Sixteenth and Fairview and Sixteenth. And so, we can, certainly, certainly. Yeah, Sixteenth, okay. And, um, applicant gain concurrence with staff to further develop detail and scale of architectural elements on Westminster Avenue. For, uh, return to the planning commission for approval, more concurrence is an issue. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, do we have, do we have a second to Commissioner Morrissey's motion? All right, okay. Is that, you can, is that you can? Yeah? Yeah. Okay, Ken, Ken Nguyen, you made a second, thank you. Uh, any further comments, conversations, or questions at this point in time? Chairman Nguyen? Vice Secretary, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Roll call vote, Commissioner Calderon?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo? I'm sorry, yes, you're right. And Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero with Vice Chair Contreras Leo absent.
Okay, thank you, I, I appreciate, um, everybody putting forth their presentation from the applicant, and, um, look forward to, I mean, obviously, the city is in a need for projects of this nature, and this is seemingly a good site. Um, look forward to working with Mercy House and, and Larry Lanes and his group. Thank you for that. And, um, good luck. With that said, with that said, with that said, um, we will close the business at this point in time, and we'll move to administrative matters. We have on here to elect a representative to the historic resource commission. At this point in time, I'd like to make the motion that we would essentially, uh, continue this item, um, until January. Is there a second on that? One second. Okay? And, uh, Vice Secretary, do we need a roll call vote on this?
Uh, yes, please. Commissioner Calderon?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero with Vice Chair Contreras Leo absent.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, that, that will conclude the business calendar, let's move on to comments. We'll start with staff comments first. Thank you, Chair McLaughlin, um, I'd like to begin by saying welcome, uh, to Commissioner Calderon, and I look forward to working with you, um, the planning commission. Um, the second item of that, which, uh, tonight is, it will be the last meeting, uh, that, uh, planning manager, Vince, pulled together, and as well as our attorney, Lieutenant Stork, who is beautiful, uh, she's not in the, um, staff today, they're not doing timing. So, I want to take this opportunity to say thank you, uh, to both the president and Lisa, and, um, I want to thank them for all the support and certain of the years and our service to the city, um, and state that, and their future endeavor and retirement is, uh, it's a good thing, so I'm going to congratulate them as well. And they may be missed as we move forward, um, so with that, I want to, I want to conclude by saying thank you, uh, to both for their service to the city. Um, this is also the last meeting of the year, Artic Law, uh, I want to reach the planning commission, uh, as well as the staff, happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Um, there is one last matter as to the next adjourned meeting. On the agenda indicates next adjourned meeting, making sure the clinic fit, uh, generally. I request that the, uh, city, uh, commission, uh, June, two-June eleventh, actually, we potentially have an agenda for that date, so you can consider adjourned to June eleventh, uh, I'd be, uh, obligated to, um, address items, uh, at that time, thank you. Okay? All right, any other, any other staff comments at this point in time?
Mr. Chairman, Vince Fregoso, just again, it's been a, a wonderful experience working with all of you, I truly appreciate it. And, uh, you'll all be missed, and, um, happy holidays to you as well, and I will see you all on the golf course. Thank you.
There you go.
Uh, Commissioners, this is Lisa Stork, I wanted to thank you all, it's been a real pleasure working with all of you, and, um, your commitment to the community and your public service is, is much appreciated, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, uh, Amy Alley, do you have anything to say?
No, just, uh, happy holidays to all, Happy New Year, thanks for all your work this year, and that's it.
Okay, and, and any other staff comments at this point? Okay, um, Commissioner Calderon?
Any comments? Um, sure, uh, just wanted to say thank you, everybody, it was, uh, really nice working with everybody, I look forward to, uh, the future, working with everybody, city staff also. And, uh, happy holidays, uh, everybody be safe, just came out of COVID, so, uh, if you haven't gotten it, please don't. So, uh, be safe out there, everybody, protect your family, but protect yourself, okay? Thank you, Miguel, welcome aboard. Um, Commissioner Garcia?
Hi, yes, uh, just, uh, welcome, uh, Commissioner Calderon, uh, and congratulations again, again to Vince and Lisa, and happy holidays to, to everybody, um, I echo Commissioner Calderon's statement that everybody be careful, it's, uh, a little crazy out there right now, so be very careful and be safe.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Calderon, look forward to working with you. Um, and, and congratulations to, uh, Lisa and Vince on their retirement. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with you, pal, and, uh, just like to say a very happy holidays to everybody, be safe out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Nguyen?
I'd also like to welcome Commissioner Calderon. Um, like, this will be my last sitting as a member of the city planning commissioner. It's all the ending, my fifty years serving as city planner, twelve years of chartered local and commission, and board in planning commissioner, uh, the serving, we have done between Vietnamese-American community and with the city of Santa Ana. Uh, we now have Councilman Taipan, a newly elected Vietnamese-American to Santa City Council, and I'm firmly confident that Councilman Taipan has effectively served our city, has effectively worked in the Vietnamese-American community with the city of Santa Ana. Uh, it has been my great privilege and great pleasure to serve the city of Santa Ana with safety, one of your plan, many member of planning commissioners, I'm grateful for that. Uh, thank God, city staff, and your values, values support, especially to thank the bin and Lisa, best wishes to both of you. Uh, last but not least, I would like to thank, um, Chairman McLaughlin for being a great leader. I am, I am enjoying working with all of you, it has been an incredible experience serving in the planning commissioner, and that all because of every one of you. Uh, you are a fabulous team, and I would actually be delighted to work with you. I wish all of you a Merry Christmas, best wishes to you and your family for the health, happiness, and their coming year.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, um, where do we start? First of all, I guess, I, I'll start off by saying, Miguel, again, it's a, a pleasure to have you onboard with, uh, the planning commission. Hopefully, uh, uh, you'll enjoy what we do and, and, uh, support the efforts of, of the general plan throughout, uh, throughout the next couple of years with regards to, um, you know, the planning commission. Um, Ken, thank you very much for all your service, and thank you for all your support, and you really have been a, an asset to our team. And, um, I know it's been a long time working with the city, uh, but, um, there'll be other opportunities, I'm sure, that will come along, and you've done a great job, uh, working with everybody in the community, both the Vietnamese community and, and the rest of the community of Santa Ana. But thank you for your support, um, that's it, and Vince, you're, um, you're going to be missed. I mean, you're, you're a cornerstone of the, uh, of this organization, you've been, been here, you've been through a lot, and you've, um, seen a lot of change, and you've seen a lot of good things happen, and you've made a lot of good things happen. We thank you for that, and, and, uh, yes, we'll, we'll get out on the golf course with you for sure, there's no doubt about that. And Lisa, hopefully, hopefully you'll get that new computer before you, before you leave. But, uh, if not.
Not counting on this.
But we, uh, we do appreciate, we do appreciate all you've done to keep, like I said in the past, people out of trouble. Um, you know, we tend to do some things that may, may not make sense, but then, you know, with your guidance, we've been able to navigate through the different, uh, the different avenues, and navigate where we get to, and come up with some good solutions for some of the issues we've had on our, on our plate over the years, and we thank you for that, and we thank you for your service, hope you and Vince, for your service with Chanana. Um, I do want to wish everybody a happy holidays and, and a safe holidays, I mean, it seems like everybody, like Miguel said, uh, has gone through a little bit of the COVID, and, uh, we need to do things to protect ourselves, and hopefully, hopefully we are doing those things, and we appreciate, uh, everybody having a safe and a good holiday. Um, with that said, uh, I would like to adjourn this meeting, uh, to January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. And, um, enjoy your holidays, enjoy the new year, and thank you for your service this year, and thank you for your, your service over the number, over the last couple of years, thank you. Good night.
Yes, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Let me go ahead and call on, uh, our new colleague, Councilmember Jesse Lopez. Jesse, go ahead and the floor is yours. Councilmember, are you on mute? We can't hear anything on, on this end. Councilmember Lopez. Madam Clerk is, uh, is, is the councilmember connected still?
I just received a message from Councilmember Lopez. She accidentally hit that button. She's awkward, thank you. Did you want to proceed?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and, uh, let, as soon as she comes back on, uh, Cal, uh, Madam Clerk, go ahead and let me know. Councilmember, uh, Nelly D'Amendos, uh, why don't you go ahead and make your closing comments?
Thank you, Mayor Sanz. I'd first like to acknowledge to thank our ongoing councilmembers, uh, for being memorialized by Diego and the mayor, David P. Lopez. It's been a pleasure working with you, not just, uh, seeing you last few months, but, uh, seeing you, uh, in action throughout the year. There's been, uh, progress, far, progress in our city and, uh, great, uh, advancements. And, uh, now we are into a different era in, uh, in Santa Ana. And, uh, you helped to bring us to this kind of, uh, level in the city of Santa Ana. We continue to be better. So I just wanted to say thank you for all those years that you've put in. Continue to, uh, be near, nearby, that we can communicate and, and change your leadership and guidance, uh, with your experience, uh, as a city council member and district mayor. And to the new council, uh, and to the mayor, Tom Hennel. Uh, my coffee is direct, uh, so Sarah is saying that we must work together and collaborate. Make Santa Ana one of the best cities in the entire, uh, Orange County. There is, uh, many, much work for us to do and, uh, we're proud, we're all strangers to challenges or hardships. And so I think that, um, we have an incredible progressive, uh, body of, uh, people here. So work together rather than against each other. Because I, I have met all of you and I, I know that the interest is genuine in representing the, our respective boards in a manner that is professional, inclusive, and to create more, uh, services of, uh, high quality, uh, life for our constituents. So I, I welcome you to go forward, Steve. I am tremendously honored to be serving such a terrific group of people. Congratulations to all of you in all aspects of, uh, of Santa Ana.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think, uh, Councilmember Jesse Lopez is back on line with us. Uh, Councilmember Lopez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Sanz. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, you know, I was just saying that words cannot be used for us. My deep gratitude to all of the families in Orange County, believed in our charity and supported us throughout our journey. When I decided to run for office, my desire was to live, to live as one nation, to be better for my neighbors as much as I wanted it for my own family. And the opportunity to be a servant, your contribution to the investment, your responsibility is a huge honor. Orange County is a pride of communities that I know and that I love. And I will cherish every and every conversation I've had with the families in Orange County. I, I believe that the public is responsible and active on a systemic level. And I remain committed towards doing my coffee for the issues of Orange everyday people. Like this week, supporting our public school, providing food to those who are homeless in Orange County, to serve us and that climate change, and helping the lectures of our community. And Jesse, the COVID pandemic under control. This victory, so on, to people in Santa Ana, believing compassion in our heat, as we cannot give them this, and opportunity tomorrow. I don't know, I'd like to see this opportunity to make my family and my team, for supporting the young step on the way. As we move forward, we will face tough challenges together, we'll go over problems together. And I will always work hard for you and for you. And finally, I'm honored to be with us for nineteen years in El Salvador. So thank you to my family in El Salvador. Again, I'm proud of my work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez. Uh, Councilmember David Ben Yallos. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Samiento. I just wanted to also take an opportunity to, to thank, um, former Mayor Pulido, uh, former councilmembers, Diego Santos, Moniel, for your service and dedication to our community and wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. And with that, I wanted to, you know, give a nice one, welcome to our new colleagues, uh, Council, Councilwoman Fan, Councilwoman Lopez, and Councilmember Hernandez. Welcome to all three of you. Mr. Mayor Samiento, welcome in your new role. Uh, and I'm excited for what we could all do and for our city and work together with it forward. I know that we, a lot of, a lot of things are possible if we just put our, our hard work and love for our city together. Um, one little tip that I would give my new colleagues, specifically the councilmembers, is, you know, this is, this is, uh, a lot of work. And, uh, having full-time jobs and, and full-time council dedication. You know, I wanna just express the need all of you to, every once in a while, you know, take a day, just take a day and turn off your devices, disconnect, um, uh, go for a hike, go for, go to the beach, go for a jog. Uh, your, your mental health is extremely important and it's been, uh, you know, your health is, if you put your health first, as well as out of our communities, but just take time for yourself every once in a while. Cause it is a lot of work, but I'm sure you're all gonna handle just fine. And, uh, wish you guys the best of luck in your new role. Uh, with that said, I wanna thank all of you, uh, for your trust and vote in, uh, electing me as your mayor pro tem. I hope I don't disappoint any of you. Uh, I'm looking forward to working together. And just, uh, one final thought to our residents listening. Uh, I know there was a tax position that came in, uh, earlier today, and it was considered, uh, the state. You know, don't panic, you know, continue precautions, wear your masks, social distance, continue to be safe. And remember that there are resources available provided by the city. And if you have any questions and any of those resources, please visit www.santa-hannah.org/covid19 uh, for more information on those. Uh, with that said, Mr. Mayor, I have a little quick one. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Ben Yallos. I think I misspoke when I first recognized him during his comments. So thank you for those, uh, for those words. Uh, Councilmember Ty Phan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, I wanna take this time to congratulate again, uh, Mayor Samiento and Councilmembers Lopez and Hernandez. Uh, thank you to all the residents of Santa Ana, but particularly the residents of Fort One, uh, for your support and trust. You know, the twenty twenty election, we showed all of us that representation matters, community support matters. And I'm just so honored to be the first Native American and the first Asian American woman to serve as a city councilmember. And I know I'll continue to work with all residents to make sure we engage our diverse communities, build bridges as we navigate out of the city. I want to first thank my husband, Cora, for always being a wonderful partner, ready to jump in and onboard, just working every adventure. Uh, thank you to my friends and family who encouraged me and, frankly, fed me during this race. And of course, thank you to the volunteers and residents who put in their time and energy in making our win a reality. Um, I definitely wanna thank you to staff for working quickly to accommodate these new, ever-changing COVID walls. To ensure we have a safe installation process, I, I often think of it as a policy. And I really wanna take this moment because I'd be remiss if I didn't think and share a bit about the incredible woman who's forming in, uh, in the video of the video. So like me, Edith is a first generation Vietnamese refugee in the USA for one time. Uh, she's an immigration attorney who has dedicated her life's work to advocating for refugees, detainees, and victims of male sports persecution, torture, and domestic violence women trafficking. She's a champion of Asian Americans' public service and law and never hesitates to mentor, uplift, and encourage young people to seek to be more better for a little place. Uh, her philanthropic work includes forming the Los Angeles Shepherd and Woolright with her spouse, Shepherd Co., which helped to provide which raises funds for the program for torture victims and other nonprofits. So I'm incredibly proud to know her and proud that she's been working in. And finally, I'd like to say that I'm guilty of duty of the councilwoman like me, and I'm glad to dedicate, to be dedicated and to be thoughtful and to be conservative as a public servant. So I'm really excited to be a part of this new era in Santa Ana, especially with a millennial majority. I'm very proud of that. And I know we'll work collaboratively together to help the city to pass this pandemic and really ensure a healthier, safer, prosperous Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Phan. Boy, it really sounds good to call all these new folks, Councilmembers, so, uh, welcome to all of you. And, uh, you know, I simply wanna say, I, I, you know, to the members of the public who called in and spoke, I know there were many of you. And, uh, you know, I think that's the beauty that we have here in Santa Ana, that we have so many people that are engaged and wanna speak and wanna speak for their heart. And I think they spoke, uh, something that I noticed that was a little different from, uh, other times. There was a sense of hope and I heard that coming through in every comment. And, uh, and that, that's a good thing because I think we have a moment right now to be able to, um, capture that hope, do good things with it. I think we have a city council that is, um, you know, vested right now with confidence and trust to be able to address the issues that, uh, many of us saw firsthand and have known firsthand. So, um, you know, the diversity of this council now is really interesting hearing, you know, some of the councilmembers talk about, you know, uh, Councilmember Lopez talk about her family from South Carolina, um, you know, Councilmember Phan talk about her, uh, family and her roots, uh, in Vietnam. And, you know, obviously we have members of the council that have, you know, Mexican origin, uh, and you have a Bolivian on here as well, a few with Latin, I say. Uh, so I wanna just take a few moments of the council and indulge me just for a few comments in Spanish because we have a large audience of Bolivians that are watching. We have a four-hour difference, so it's about one in the morning, but we're gonna want them to go to bed. So, um, I don't know, Bolivianos, compatriotas, que están escuchando y sintonizando desde la paz, Santa Cruz, Cochabamba, y todas las ciudades de Bolivia. Les agradezco, les mando un fuerte abrazo desde su ciudad de Maná, aquí, Santa Ana, California. Les agradezco de parte de alguien que nunca se va, se va a olvidar sus raíces y aquí siempre van a tener su casa, uh, con brazos abiertos aquí en Santa Ana. Gracias a todos. Uh, bringing it back to, to the council, I just, uh, simply wanna, um, you know, thank everybody who participated in the election. And I was really stunned to see that almost eighty percent of our voters go out and cast ballots. And, uh, and that's very rare. Uh, over ninety-five thousand folks voted, uh, and they voted, you know, uh, early. And that was amazing because, again, looking at the numbers of how many people voted by mail dropped off to ballots and, and vote boxes. Uh, all those things under some very precarious conditions. Um, it's a testament to people's, um, interest in making sure that their city government works. To our employees, I wanna thank you. I wanna thank you for everything that you have done while I've been on the council as, as a councilmember. And I wanna thank you again in advance for everything that you're gonna do, uh, with this new city council. I know it's gonna be different. You all have probably, uh, none of you, uh, know, uh, any other mayor except for, uh, uh, outgoing former Mayor Pulido. So to the extent that, um, I will serve hopefully as a bridge from the, you know, former council and past experience to, you know, this new council. Uh, I wanna be able to do that. I certainly, uh, I promise you one thing, I won't stay twenty-six years. Uh, I can, I can guarantee you that. Um, and I wanna give a nod to some of my, uh, former colleagues that served with me, uh, earlier in my, uh, council career. Uh, Salvina Hedo, David Ben Rivas, Michelle Martinez, Roman Reyna. Uh, we kinda came in as a class together and so we, uh, you know, we, we couldn't have done many of the things that we're experiencing now had it not been for some groundwork that was late, way, way back then. Um, we all know, um, we're gonna be facing, you know, consequences of this pandemic for at least, um, you know, into the next year. Uh, probably the next, second quarter of next year. Uh, but I'm hopeful, I really am hopeful that, um, we finally see that we are gonna be solving this and under our watch. We're gonna, you know, do all the great things that we wanna do, send our kids back to school, open up our businesses, get people back to work. And more than anything, make our community healthy. So, um, finally, all I wanna mention to all of my colleagues and staff and, uh, everybody, you know, in the city, let us, let us, um, you know, just, um, feel blessed as well because, uh, especially for those of us who serve, this is a privilege. And we never have, we should never forget that, um, you know, there is a commitment, there is a covenant that we have with the public and we have to, um, listen to them. Uh, and we have to fulfill, uh, our responsibilities and, you know, integrity, uh, with respect. And, you know, for those of you who are up here, we're gonna spend a lot of time together. Uh, you know, I've seen former councilmembers who've served with me and I've seen their children grow up and they've seen mine. And we become friends to this day and we will share things that are very difficult and, you know, we will have to make tough decisions. But I want us to enjoy each, of course, to enjoy each other's company and be, uh, to be in the moment, right? Um, there's no reason why we can't, um, you know, make tough decisions and at the same time realize, hey, this is our extended family here. So I hope that that's the spirit which we all commend. That's something I wanna hopefully, you know, have all of us, uh, take part in. Um, and with that, um, that, uh, go ahead and end my comments and turn it over to the city manager, uh, to see if she has any comments before I adjourn.
Just very briefly, sir, I, I want to congratulate you as our new mayor. I'd also like to congratulate our new, uh, congratulate our new mayor Pro Tem, along with the three councilmembers, Hernandez, Lopez, and Phan. I'm really excited and I'm looking forward to working with each of you to accomplish your policy initiatives. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that, uh, name, uh, uh, Mayor Samiento. Councilmember Jonathan Hernandez. Yes, Councilmember. I did want to, uh, I, I did want to make something up and, uh, I, I figured, tell me, uh, the way I'm experiencing this year that, in this pandemic, I know there's a lot of people that are struggling, working, maybe, there's a lot of essential workers that aren't ready to do this pandemic. I wanted to make a recommendation that all executive directors, whoever's had, you know, communicating to the extent possible, any employees to get their development agency. And I understand that the state needs the employees at the power work center to have been allowed to work openly due to a city open case at the work center. While, while, uh, the state employees are not, uh, truly protected. So I, I just wanted to suggest that whatever we can to minimize the spread of, uh, of COVID as a city and allow them to be openly working with the public to do that. Great. Thank you for that, uh, that comment, uh, Councilmember Hernandez. Um, hearing no other comments and seeing no other comments up here, um, I just simply wanna go ahead and say thank you to everybody, um, who tuned in and listened and saw the video. Thank you for the video. That was an amazing, amazing crusade to the staff that worked on it. Thank you to all of you for that, uh, hard work. Um, and I will now, for the first time in a dis-sleeve council, let you in the meeting till, uh, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you. Good night.
Are you struggling from the effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic? Well, the city of Santa Ana wants to help. The new Santa Ana Cares program includes free coronavirus testing for Santa Ana residents, rental assistance, help with past due utility bills, childcare pay assistance for workers, grants for businesses, nonprofits, and artists, and much more. We are also bringing those resources directly to dozens of Santa Ana neighborhoods. These local resource centers will make it easy to get connected with the services and programs we may need during this difficult time. You will see this one is hanging on your door the day before we will be in your neighborhood to let you know we are coming. This free service is available for Santa Ana residents only and all participants must wear a face covering when attempting. To learn more about Santa Ana Cares, please visit www.santa-hannah.org/cares or call the Cares hotline at seven one four six six seven. Right now, across Orange County, we're using our, right now, the call goes up for you to step up and help in every way that you're standing. We need all the members of your town to do that. Wearing your mask is a simple way to show your family, your friends, your community that you care for. It's when you keep the safety of others in mind and inspires them to think of you too. So please, take a mask with you when you're out and about and remember to stay at least six feet apart from others. We do our part. We help prevent the spread of coronavirus. We do a part in the spread of movement of collective consideration for our community. Right now, it's time to come together and work and work together to build a better tomorrow. When we work together, we are strong. We need each other like a no other time in history. Right now, it's time to stand together. We need you. We need you. We need you to stand up, put on your masks. I've got my mask. I've got it. Come back stronger because we did it. The COVID nineteen global pandemic has affected us all in one way or another. At the onset of this crisis, the city of Santa Ana emerged swiftly to provide relief. Less than one week after the World Health Organization declared the coronavirus a global pandemic, the Santa Ana City Council declared a local emergency. And the city manager began issuing executive orders to stop evictions and provide financial relief through existing city programs. In August, the city of Santa Ana received federal funding to fight the coronavirus. Within weeks, the city launched the Santa Ana Cares Assistance Program to help residents pay rent, utilities, and other bills. To provide grants for businesses and nonprofits, and even to offer a grant for local artists impacted by the pandemic. The city then began deploying local resource centers directly into Santa Ana neighborhoods. A move that made it most convenient and easy for residents to take advantage of the assistance programs and onsite COVID testing. Muchas gracias, San Juan. The Cares Hallway filled thousands of homes to answer questions about the new programs and help the public navigate the application process. Santa Ana Cares offers a myriad of programs for those struggling in the wake of the pandemic. One final component of the program is free COVID testing. The city provided free testing for all residents at Santa Ana College, local high schools, and at the local resource centers in parks and neighborhoods. More than seventeen thousand tests have been administered. The city has deployed the local resource centers to over one hundred Santa Ana neighborhood and park locations, reaching thousands of residents. The city handed out more than two hundred and seventy thousand masks and provided free COVID testing onsite. In addition to free COVID testing, the city offers a multilingual nurse hallway with twenty-four seven free help advice for any residents who have questions about coronavirus. Santa Ana Cares offers a variety of financial assistance programs. One program helps tenants who have lost income during the pandemic by sending a three thousand dollar rental payment directly to their landlords. Another program pays monthly back rent owed by tenants if the landlord agrees to forgive twenty percent and won't raise rent for a dollar, which inevitably helps both the landlord and the tenant keep their head above water. Millions of dollars in rental assistance is being handed out through these programs. Of course, with children at home these days, childcare is a necessity for many families. The Santa Ana Cares Child Care Program offers up to a thousand dollars to help residents who are financially impacted by COVID nineteen. Utility assistance has been provided through the Comprehensive City Program. Grants of five hundred dollars for Santa Ana households impacted by the coronavirus have reached more than eleven hundred residents for past due utility bills like electricity, natural gas, phone, internet, water, sewer, and refuse. Of course, small businesses throughout Santa Ana are also impacted by the shutdown order and economic slowdown. Again, the Santa Ana Cares Program stepped up to the challenge with several resources for businesses, including grants up to ten thousand dollars for those with up to twenty-five year olds. A restaurant and bar relief grant was also implemented to target the city's vibrant nightlife community. Over three hundred Santa Ana businesses have taken advantage of these grants, helping to stay off closer.
That's a number cutting for a journey. I can use that as a, 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 additional seats in dining inside. Um, that can keep me, uh, working for my staff. A lot of hands up today.
Finally, an arts related grant program assisted individual artists and arts related nonprofit organizations. And the city also began to recruit restaurants, retailers, hair salons, and personal care services to expand their operations outdoors to help prevent the spread of COVID nineteen.
My business took a big hit. I also took a big hit as a artist. So, um, the grant money has definitely helped to pay rent for the studio and other expenses that, you know, didn't disappear quite as soon.
These are just a few of the programs that have helped Santa Ana weather these trying times. And while we may not know when life will fully return to, we do know that our community is stronger when we come together. And that is exactly what Santa Ana Cares needs to do to its programs and services. The application period has closed for some programs, but others are still open, including rental assistance. Time is running out, so apply now. The city remains steadfast in its commitment to provide its residents and businesses with all of the assistance it can. Now, more than ever, it is clear that Santa Ana cares. Now, more than ever, it is clear that Santa Ana CARES.
To Santa Ana Public Services Area, the project team at Santa Ana Public Center is designed to help the private and middle-class citizens child communities with childcare and elder needs. The center is designed to be a place to help people with disabilities, whoever children, or someone with disabilities. This program includes employees, folks, and community members who need to be able to pay. We also have ourself a community group. This program provides services to senior and middle-class citizens who need to be able to support their family. It's a rather complicated resource to be in, which makes it really hard. Children, elderly, and those who need assistance. All services required are free and available. To Santa Ana Public Services Area, the project team at Santa Ana Public Center provides services to parents of age, gender, sexual orientation, and pride divisioned parents. The center is open Monday through Friday, noon to nine PM.
Hi, my name is Ryan Sterber. I'm the library services director here at the City of Santa Ana. I'm here today to tell you a little bit about some of the new and exciting programs, services, and offerings we have at the New Hope Ranch Library. Santa Ana Public Library is excited to begin offering our site pickup, along with home based services and check-in services. The new Hope Ranch Library provides services from one to ten years to six years. Monday through Friday, in the hour of the day, there's opportunities to start building the libraries to be able to collect children. It expands the services for large ones in September. We have a community group with library information that we want to be able to publish once COVID- nineteen has been completed. Although Santa Ana Public Library has currently closed since nineteen ten, the new Hope Library has been received with live great upgrades and promotions that use the residents of all ages and age groups. These upgrades will ensure that it improves and upgrades production with age appropriate content for children and adults. New libraries feature featuring designs and programs that inspire middle travelers. Children can use and review. Media lab featuring cutting-edge technology for you. Connectivity along with screen science technology feeding engineering art and mathematics. These are all good. A dedicated professional librarian also has staff available to help assist you in increasing services to you and your people. New exterior landscaping, side roads, light, and long interior exterior painting to make the facility more attractive to parents and children. Expanded service hours each day, the building is capable to accommodate twelve. These additional hours will offer advanced access and services for children and their parents. Please visit the library's website at www.santaanna.org/library for information on the Hope Ranch and the many other services offered by the city of Santa Ana. Thank you for joining me today on this first tour of the New Hope Ranch Library. We look forward to seeing you on September eighth as we launch our new roadside pickup service here at New Hope.
Tenemos un puerto familiar para cuidar de los niños. Este puerto es ético, gente es rica, su área de juegos para que los niños se pueden divertir. También tenemos el salón de televisión adecuado para los niños. Es un centro para los niños con discapacidad, como los sentidos y experiencias historias de personas defensoras de la familia de mesa. Los niños están en el cuarto de marcos donde puede ocupar por telesección, residuos, asesoramiento social legal, muchos más. Todos los servicios prestados son gratuitos. El Centro de Posiciones Familiales de Santa Ana, estado de policía de Santa Ana, está abierto a los servicios de atención de salud, sexismo, intención sexual, corazón. El centro está abierto a los niños.